All right, I call the order of this meeting on the 34th City Council for April 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Everyone in attendance, if you, a kind reminder to please silence your cell phones or any other communication devices as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can I have the roll called? Roll call, call.
Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elsoafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
All right, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Gary Enos. Gary?
At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Stephen Green of Good Shepherd United Methodist Church of Dearborn. He will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor Hamud and City Council President Serini and members of the City Council, thank you for inviting me. It's really an honor to be here. Would you join with me in prayer? Most gracious and loving God, hallowed be your name. We give thanks for your many blessings. We come to you this evening praying for the welfare and prosperity of this great city of Dearborn. We ask that you would be with all the people in this diverse community, that we may live and work together in mutual respect and harmony. We pray also for our mayor, City Council members, and all our public servants who are entrusted with the responsibility of civil government. May your hand of blessing and protection be upon them and their families. Give them wisdom, guidance, and courage in this time of mounting world division, tension, hatred, and violence. Bless and protect our first responders, police, fire, EMS, and others. We seek your peace and wholeness as we pray these prayers in your most holy name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first item of business?
Item number four, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick, recognizing April 28th, 2024 as Workers Memorial Day and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The 34th City Council would like to designate April 28th, 2024, as Workers Memorial Day in the city of Dearborn. This day, we pay our respects to those who've lost their lives on the job and recognize the impact, the impact that these losses have on the families as well as their coworkers and the community in whole. We believe it is appropriate to honor the memory of courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's workforce who have been injured, disabled, or have died because of workplace accidents. The Council renewed its efforts in seeking stronger workplace and health protections, better standards and enforcement, and fair and just compensation by rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in our workplace. Therefore, the 34th Dearborn City Council proclaims April 28th, 2024 as Workers Memorial Day. Any questions or comments on this? A unanimous roll shall be attached. Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item?
Item number five, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris, recognizing April 30th, 2024 as National Therapy Animal Day and requesting immediate effect.
Okay. Pet Partners have designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. The therapy animal teams in Dearborn play an essential role in improving human health and well-being throughout the human-animal bond. Therapy animals interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life. The city of Dearborn does hereby recognize April 30th, 2024 as National Therapy Animal Day. This resolution shall be given immediate effect. I know we do have a member of our residents, Michelle Schuler, here to speak on that. We'd like to have you come forward, and then after Councilman Elsoafi, we would like to add some comments as well.
Thank you for inviting me to speak.
Excellent. And just your name for the record.
Michelle Schuler.
Okay.
I have had therapy dogs myself for over 20 years. I've had three dogs, worked with every one of them, and I've been involved in the therapy dog world for 25 years. I now teach classes to help people prepare their dogs for therapy dog work, and I am a certified evaluator for a group called the Bright and Beautiful Therapy Dogs. My three dogs have each probably made over 400 visits during their lifetimes. So that's a lot of visits. Pet Partners, as you mentioned, which is now part of the American Kennel Club, Alliance of Therapy Dogs, Therapy Dogs International, and the Bright and Beautiful Therapy Dogs that I volunteer for are four of the main groups throughout the country who certify animals to become therapy dogs so that we can rely on their behavior and temperament. Then there are local groups here in Michigan, the Fur Angels, to which I belong, Mid-Michigan Therapy Dogs, Pet-a-Pat, and several others. Therapy dogs are not service dogs, nor are they emotional support dogs. There is a very big difference, and I'm not going to take your time to go through all the differences. But they are, in most cases, required to be evaluated for temperament and personality. They have to be steady and unflappable in any situation. They have to be calm and outgoing, friendly but gentle, obedient, and reliable. We visit in hospitals, schools, all ages of children, nursing homes, churches, courtrooms, funeral homes, hospice facilities, homeless shelters, physician and dental offices. Studies show that the therapy dogs, when they visit patients, show a decrease in vital signs, pain scores, anxiety levels. Dogs bring diversion, remind people of pleasant memories in their past, aid in physical and occupational therapy exercises, act as a reward for good behavior, or work well done for special students, or for students with special needs especially. They help support employee satisfaction and stress relief in places of employment. And yes, we go to people's jobs and take our dogs there, and they're allowed to take a break and come to visit the dogs. I have gone into many, many schools throughout southeastern Michigan and done dog safety and bite prevention assemblies in schools and at scouting programs. But most of all, they bring their own special brand of unconditional love to everyone they meet. I could tell you lots of stories and amazing memories that I have made with my dogs over the years, but if you've ever experienced, and even if you have your own dogs, they can be therapy for you as well. I think this is an excellent thing to do, to recognize therapy dogs. People that volunteer with their therapy dogs are just that. We don't do it for any money. There's no recompense that we get for bringing our dogs anywhere. But it's the best volunteer gig I have ever done, bar none.
Thank you.
And I've done a lot of volunteer work, so.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments and your time. Councilman Elsoafi?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, Michelle, thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate you taking the time out of your day. And as a combat veteran, I know firsthand the important role of whether it's therapy dog or service dogs, that the positive impact that they can have on a patient or even soldiers that I've seen come back with PTSD. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate all the volunteers that put a lot of hours to make this happen. And I'd just like to add one more thing. So somebody that's behind the cameras, that does all the magic, Greg, you're his mother, correct?
Yeah.
So I really appreciate Greg. Nobody can see him because he's behind the cameras, but he controls everything. He puts in a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate him, and I appreciate you as well, ma'am. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Unanimous roll, there you go. Okay, barring any objection, unanimous roll shall be attached. At this time, we would, Mayor, are you prepared?
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to motion to entertain the suspend the rules so that we can have a presentation by the mayor. I need a motion. It's a motion by Councilman Enos, supported by Councilman Paris. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. The rules are suspended. Mayor?
Thank you so much. You know, working through our neighborhood liaisons and kind of scouring social media as I do, I came across a group of residents in the Snow Woods District who rallied for their own neighborhood. They came together, and they organized a cleanup campaign across their whole neighborhood. And oftentimes, you know, you have residents who'll come forward and complain about what's happening in their own backyards, or you have residents that roll up their sleeves, try to gather volunteers, and go out about it and try to clean up what's happening around them. And that's always those who are forward in that nature. We really want to try to uplift that message. You know, just last week, we launched the Mayor's Service Corps, where we had three volunteer groups go out to three separate parks across the city as well, and we're organizing our service day, actually kicking off on the May 3rd over in the south end. We're planting the first butterfly garden across the city. And so really want to recognize Sherri Dotson, Andrea Hild, and Sura Peter, who are here, and would love to thank them for really taking this effort, for taking this on, for rallying your neighborhood. Sura, who's from Sterling Heights originally, but been with us now for 10 years, is really the one who kind of did the rallying call and has garnered volunteer upon volunteer. And I think what's beautiful is you kind of see it catching on across the city. I've now seen other neighborhoods following suit, and I think that's the type of trend that we'd love to see happen here in the city of Dearborn. So would like to thank you. We have certifications for you. If you come with to the front of the stage, welcome council to also step forward and take a picture with them if possible.
All right. All right. It's always nice to recognize people in our community. We had a little pre-meeting before with some Cub Scouts. They're back here in the back. And I think during that time, we had mentioned a saying that Councilwoman, late Councilwoman Nancy Hubbard used to tell me, is that if everybody, she believed it was a comment from her father, that if everybody cleaned up and swept their own front yard and porch, we would have, the whole city would be clean. So I thank the mayor for recognizing this, and the city's doing the best they can. And, you know, it's infectious, I was saying earlier. When you see your neighbor's house all cleaned up and tidied, it makes you want to clean yours up as well. So thank you for being here, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that forward. Mr. Clerk, the next item is-
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay, the council rules were enacted this term that now allows 30 minutes of public comment prior to the business items to better serve our residents. Kind reminder that there is a three-minute limitation. You will be given a 30-second warning by the clerk, and we have public comment cards. That's how we're going to take them in order. If you do not want to fill out a card, you could just be recognized by myself, and we'll have you come up in the order that these are called. So first, we do have Kathy DeLaFonte. Did I pronounce that right? And I'm not sure, Kathy, if Mary Ann Smith is together with you or separately.
She's separate.
Separate, okay. Absolutely. Kathy?
Same subject.
Same subject. Okay, no problem. Just because we received a packet, ma'am, just if you can, just state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have, your time will begin.
My name is Kathy DeLaFonte, and I live at 7910 Maple Street.
Go ahead, you may begin, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Honorable mayor and City Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak at tonight's meeting. I am a lifelong resident of Dearborn, and I won't talk, we won't discuss how long that's been. Last week, on April 17th, I submitted a package of pictures to you and issues which I'd like to bring to your attention. I have a family member and her neighbors who reside on Leonard Street and Calhoun Street, north, Calhoun Street north of Leonard Street, up until Bryant. These issues are fire and rescue, police services, illegal parking, traffic, and littering on these busy and hectic days in that, you know, specific area of the neighborhood. My family is also a lifelong residence of this area specifically, and I've been a lifelong visitor of her and her family as well. I, when I do frequently visit, I've witnessed and experienced some of these incidences myself. The residents are alarmed and frightened if they need fire and rescue or police services, that it would be impossible for them to receive them because of the illegal parking and traffic throughout the day. Mail delivery, package delivery, lawn service, any other service, they're affected by the traffic and illegal parking. Parking on the, no parking, sides of the street, and fire zones, inferno fire hydrants, blocking alleys, blocking driveways. The pictures I provided show all of the illegal parking, like I explained, in the fire zone and in the no parking areas.
You have 30 seconds.
One picture provided showed blocked egress due to illegal parking in the alley behind the apartment building on the corner of Leonard and Calhoun. I've been harassed by drivers trying to visit my family, cuss that, yell that, consistently blowing their horns, residents trying to take a walk or cross the street or harass.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, no, no, if you have anything to conclude, I'd like to finish your thought, and then we'll address some liaisons. Are you, I know when you sent us the packet, did you have anything you wanted to leave, to finish with, or?
Just some more of the basic incidences.
The same things you provided.
Yes.
Okay, if we have our chief here, Chief, if you can come. So ma'am, I can tell you, the question I had, some of these pictures, I mean, obviously, the city of Dearborn has a very policy regarding parking vehicles on unpaved pavement, on unpaved areas, excuse me, like grass. So these pictures of blocking alleys, these are all illegal situations. Is this situation happening on a certain time or day? Is this, is this when there was a large holiday? Is this a religious facility next door?
As far as I know, it's on several days. Like, I never know when is a good time to come visit. Okay? And it could be day or night these things are happening.
Right, I understand. But I guess, I guess I'm trying to point it down, this is not hap, because you sent some pictures that show normal dates. So is there, is there a facility value that you believe is causing this? Or just this apartments are full?
I believe the parking might be, there's a Dearborn Community Center, I believe, on Leonard.
That's, yeah, that's a, it's a religious facility. So there was, there was a holiday recently. Was this taken during that time?
No, this has been throughout, you know, weeks and months and-
No, I understand. But I guess I'm trying to pin down the time, but it sounds like there is no time. It happens every day, at every time, at every minute. Is that right?
Well, when there's activities, I believe, at the Dearborn Community Center.
At the center, okay. So, Chief?
Which is quite often.
No, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I understand. Chief, I know that we frequent these areas, some of them, and I know that we tolerate some of the things during major, major events and so on and so forth, but it seems like this is happening regularly, and the photos about parking on grass and blocking alleyways and fire, fire, what do you call it?
Fire lanes.
Fire lanes and hydrants. Do you have anything you can add that could help alleviate this problem?
Council President Esa Shaheen, Chief of Police, I would love the opportunity to speak with the resident offline and get an opportunity to look into it a little bit further. As you were alluding to, Council President, the month of Ramadan just finished, and obviously all of our mosques and houses of worship were extremely busy for that entire month. I don't know if it's, it should happen to be on Friday afternoons. I imagine that there's a lot of traffic issues then as well. But I really liked the opportunity to sit with you and kind of better understand the issue.
Yes, because what we can do, ma'am, I mean, even though there's tolerance as to compliance, we still need compliance. So I want you to understand that myself and the council, and I'm sure the mayor can speak for himself, but no one should be able, no one has to live in that type of environment as far as blocking, you're blocking ways and so on. So we have to find an alternative. If it's consistent, the chief finds it to be consistent, he will then contact us and the administration on ways to find alternative parking that the facilities can use as opposed to parking and blocking alleyways and other areas of fire strain. So we do appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Okay. And like I said, the residents, they're concerned that the fire trucks, ambulance, police, they can't get through the street.
Right. No, no, that's a valid concern. Yeah, it's a valid concern, and that's why I asked the chief to come out.
Okay.
So he's going to get some information from you, and he is our chief, and it's going to, you know, we have the best police department in the state. They're going to make sure they get, get some resolve for you. And if you don't have, if it's not reached to a level that you feel satisfactory, you make sure you contact back to council, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Like I said, I'm a lifelong resident.
I know, but you didn't tell us how many-
I love this city.
We love this city too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Next, we have Mary Ann Smith. Just your name.
Councilmembers.
Thank you, just your name for the record.
Mary Ann Smith. That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
You may begin.
I lived in Dearborn for over 70 years. Okay? Kids went to school in Dearborn too, my grandkids. And this, this fire engine and emergency is a big issue. I live on Calhoun. If you can go to possibly, take a minute, find a big blow-up picture of this, maybe this one. Darn it, they're not numbered.
Is it this one, ma'am?
That's okay, ma'am. We all have the packet.
Do you have this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. How is, oh, most important too, this isn't one hour, okay, this may be, this is probably a Friday, not just a holiday time. This is serious, two and a half to three hours. So as they fill up, and I have to have my driveway blocked, they park underneath my pine tree, and if I come out, the patrons say, "It's not your driveway," but it's my property. In the front. This is, so where are the, where, how is a fire truck and an ambulance going to get through this? Because this is stopped as they're blowing, you know, at Leonard Street and Calhoun. It's a solid line between the parked cars. This row should not be parked here. At one time, the sign said "Fire lane." Now it just says "No parking." So we really need to have a meeting, have somebody really come to the area, maybe during 1:30 in the afternoon or 1:00 in the afternoon on a Friday. They can't, you can't even get behind my house in the alley. They are parked where a car, there's a row of cars, a small lane left, and then our garages. There's damage to our property. I lost a drain pipe, a downspout for my garage. There's, we have support for our yards before it drops into the alley. It's busting up the concrete from them trying to do U-turns in an alley. This is why, we need some policing and enforcing some of this.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds.
I'm done, okay.
Mary Ann, thank you very much.
This is really-
Right. No, I know, I appreciate you've been a resident there 70 years, so this is the first that it's brought to our attention.
Yeah.
So, correct? First time you brought it up to us?
On this traffic, yes. A lot of calls for someone to be, okay, one more thing. If my driveway is completely blocked and I can't take care of it, I call the police department. And, oh, our police is great. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Are they here?
Yeah, ma'am, they're always here, but please address the council, not the audience.
They give them grace to come, they call that prayer hall and say, "Come remove your vehicle." Now, if I'm coming home with groceries, I have to wait for somebody to come up to the cross park in front of my driveway. This is serious. It just needs to be enforced.
No, absolutely, ma'am.
We're so disappointed.
No, I, we appreciate you bringing it forward, and, and for no time whatsoever should there, even a limited time, should your driveway be blocked. You have to have-
Right.
-use of your property, and that's your property.
Yes.
So we will, we will definitely get to the bottom of that-
Okay.
-as your neighbor had indicated this situation. The chief is here to take the information as well.
Okay.
And we're going to follow up with you as well.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you for bringing it to our attention. Councilman Paris?
Thank you.
Councilman Paris has something to add.
If I could, you made mention, thank you for being here, you made mention about calling the police, so that it's been that call a number of times?
I, I've called them, and then maybe I go to my door and they're moving it, the person that parked, and I've been able to cancel before officer comes. I have called, and the fine officers are fined.
Okay. So I would imagine that there's been-
They will say, "Ma'am, this is what we do." It's a program they have. They will call the place and say, and they will give the owner the description of the vehicle and have them remove the car. So it's, it's announced during prayers, but still, I have to do this when I have company coming, remove my garbage and pull a cone in.
Right. I would only comment on this that I'm aware of, I'm thinking four and five months ago that there were complaints in the area too, and that one of the owners of one of the residences nearby actually went and talked to people at the mosque, and they had some satisfied customers after that, that they did relieve some of the problem. I'm not talking about the problem of the parking or whatever, some other issues. So the reason why I'm bringing this up, I know we have our police chief here too, but we have a couple of members of our audience too that are neighborhood liaisons.
Yes.
So knowing that the city does have some resources to possibly look into this a little bit further and, you know, from both sides.
I spoke to Robby today before.
Okay, that's great. That's exactly the point I was trying to make, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate you listening.
Yeah, we will follow up.
Please hear us.
Of course, thank you for coming. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I think my only thing about this is, I actually used to live a block from there, and so I've witnessed-
Is this for me?
Oh, no, not for you.
Oh.
If you'd like, you can stay.
Oh.
I did, I did used to actually live a block from there, and I, and I saw the, kind of like the before and after from when the mosque went into there. And I would just say, you know, I'm not always for increasing huge parking requirements and big parking lots, but it has been for a little while now. You know, Prospect Street gets full of cars on Friday prayer. I mean, the area is not really kind of planned properly for the kind of use that it has there, so I think it is kind of a longer-term issue as well to kind of work to figure out, maybe even as part of the master plan, kind of what that area is going to be in the future, and maybe downzone it so that it can actually be maybe more of a business instead of industrial district that doesn't have so much parking. So I think this is also something that we need to pay attention to in the long run.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? All right, next we have Mayor Shakira from Melvindale. Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Mayor Shakira, City of Melvindale, 3100 Oakwood Boulevard. I come before you today as we are severing- I come before you today as we are severing our contract for jailed services. The issue I have, and I hope we're able to come to some type of agreement, because ninety days has not been feasible. We are not, we have not used our jail, if my memory serves correctly, seven years now. We started shared services in August of two thousand seventeen. Therefore, there has been no maintenance to our jail whatsoever. A few weeks ago, I reached out to Mayor Hamud with this issue and seeing if we could extend our contract or come to some type of agreement, because this issue has been very expensive to take on, and we're doing our due diligence to get everything done in a timely manner. My request for an extension was until August, the end of August, August thirty-first of this year. Mayor Hamud stated that he would have a discussion with Chief Shaheen and get back to me. Since then, I have reached out twice, and both times his mailbox has been full. Mayor Hamud, this is not good business practice, and it's very unacceptable. This is a very serious situation, and it needs to be addressed. It has also been brought to my attention that Dearborn is not taking all of our prisoners, prisoners. They will take felony warrants and domestic violence arrests, but not any misdemeanors. This puts our city at huge liability. So I'm asking the council for an extension or some type of agreement to extend this and also to house our prisoners per our contract.
All right, Mayor, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate that. This is really not the forum to discuss contracts, but since you brought it up. The contract does have a ninety day expiration on it. So were you, the mayor at that time, were you there?
I was not.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was sworn in in December.
So you, so you understand the terms of the contract?
Correct.
I know, but you're stating here in front of the public that we need to uphold the contract. The contract is being upheld.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that we need to uphold the contract, I'm just asking for an extension. Obviously, I don't know if you guys know, Melvindale is a distressed community. So taking on our jail, like we're doing it, but we just need a little bit more time. Ninety days was not long enough to get everything in order.
But that's what the contract indicated. And the administration, the council has given the administration and the contract approval, just so you know, I was never in favor of the contract.
I was not either.
Yeah.
I was on council when this contract was done.
So why are you here today? I mean, why don't you put them in your own, the people in your own jail?
We are, we are coming back to our jail.
Okay.
We just need a little bit more time. Like I said, our jail has not been used in seven years, so
I understand that, but you were noticed, you were noticed in, in the right time.
Yes, correct.
So you're not claiming there's any deficiency in the contract?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so this is a contractual issue?
Correct.
Okay, so all, all I can tell you is that, you know, I know you said you tried to speak to the mayor, you did speak to him on point. The chief is here to address some, if you like, if you like to Chief, if you like to, you don't have to, because I don't think this is the right
I agree with you, and I'll be very brief. I'll just say that this decision, while I understand Melvindale's situation and I have sympathy for them, I'm making this decision because it's in the best interest of the Dearborn residents and taxpayers.
The taxpayers, exactly.
And, and ultimately, that's what's driving this decision.
And then also, just since this is in the public meeting, Chief, and so the mayor can be confident too. What is their recourse? I know they have, they're their own city and their own sovereignty, but what other point, what other option do they have if their, their facility is not ready for their, their people?
Well, I, what, I don't know if they've reached out to Wayne County Sheriff's Department, but departments that don't have jails, they can typically lodge prisoners to the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. Only felonies and domestics and drunk driving arrests typically is what they're, I think, responsible for holding, but they really need to look into that. And the one thing, I just walked out, I want to make a correction. Even this ninety day interim, we do hold misdemeanors for them, which is in accordance with the contract. That's not accurate.
Right.
And we did, we did rightfully notice them in accordance with the contract ninety days ago. And just so everyone's on the same page, May ninth will be the last day we hold Melvindale prisoners.
Right.
Correct.
So Mayor, do you understand the position of the city of Dearborn at this time?
I do. It's unfortunate, though.
Well, I wish you the best for your city. We've had a partnership in the fire department.
Yes.
How's that working?
It seems to be going well. I have a great relationship with Joe Murray, and I look forward to continuing, continuing that contract.
No, I appreciate it. Just like you have constituents, we have to, and I, I'm privy to some information that maybe some of my colleagues are not. But I have been against this contract from day one, and I don't want to put
I was against this one as well.
Well, then good, then I'm glad that we mutually agree that it's ending.
Can I make a few comments?
Mayor, if, yeah, if you like, Mayor.
So happy you're here. What I would say is, one, my voicemail box is never full.
It was
It's never been full.
Honest to God, it was full when I called.
It's never full and it's never been full. And we provided the email address, you can always email, and I'm pretty sure some of the folks you brought today know how to shoot a text message saying we're trying to get a meeting together. And I've always said, come, schedule the meeting, but that meeting has never been scheduled, nor had anybody reached out through the appropriate channels to actually schedule the meeting. So to show up to a council meeting to berate the mayor or speak negatively about the city and how we conduct business?
Was never
What I would, what I would say, what I would clarify is, there's a reason for why we decided to execute the cancellation clause and terminate this contract. It's because there was poor performance on those who decided to disrespect our officers, disrespect our supervisors, and go into a whole host of issues which I wish to not disclose at this public meeting. And I would truly hope that you do not wish for it to be disclosed at this public meeting.
I do think that it was on both ends, not just ours.
I would wholeheartedly disagree with that.
Well, I guess we'll agree to disagree.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you, Chief. Okay, next we have Mr. Hassan Alun.
Good afternoon. Please call me Savage today, because that's my name.
East Point residents win freedom of speech case against city former mayor.
Mr. Romer, yeah, Mr. Romer, we don't allow any recording.
For East Point residents who sued the city and former mayor Monique Owens in federal court alleging their First Amendment rights were violated when
Mr. Alun. Mr. Alun, this is your first warning, please disconnect those community, those conversations, those recordings. All right, we gotta remove. Mr. Alun. Mr. Alun. All right, can we please remove Mr. Alun? Alun, you cannot play audio in the council chambers.
Mr. Romer, we'll give you an opportunity to leave, you've been directed by Council President to leave, otherwise you'll be arrested.
You cannot play information in the city council chambers, that's not the problem.
If you refuse to leave, you'll be arrested. You're under arrest for failing to listen to the Council President.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, just a kind reminder, the council chambers and the council there is no props, propaganda or information that can be brought to the council to be displayed or played. This is not a decorum or a forum for personal attacks against people or personal agendas. We're here to conduct city taxpayer dollars. We have a hundred and sixty million, a hundred and eighty million dollar budget. We're here to do the job of the people, and we expect everyone to have the same courtesy in respect to others. So at this time, is there, I have no more cards, is there anyone else to address the city regarding public, from the public for city business? All right, at this time, we, you want to address the council regarding city business? Okay, yeah, step forward, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Nasir Abad, I live in the South End of Dearborn, two six zero three Harley Street, permission, four eight one two zero. I've been living in this, the street, in the South End of Dearborn for the last seventeen years. There are some basic needs that we've been, basic services that we've been complaining about for, instance, cleaning the streets, moving trees that are cut down by city contractors and just left on the side of the road. A lot of potholes on our streets, a lot of maintenance that's, that's needed. Sweeping, snow moving, leaves, all these services. We have invited most of the council members to the South End to see the issues that we have, and they all support our requests, so we request better services. And one more thing, there was a project about removing, replacing the pipelines for the, the water lines, and that project was not planned correctly. And as a city, I would, I would think that you guys would have a team that plans stuff out, plan the project out from beginning to end, and it was just done halfway, and the rest is just undone until right now. But there is no, no land done, nothing. It's just like, they replace the, the lines, put the sidewalks back, and that's it. There's still some holes on some yards in front of the house and beyond houses. Also, the alleyways, they're all not maintained, they haven't been maintained in proper years. And, yeah, we request the city of Dearborn to invest more in the South End as people are, are starting to come back that left the city years ago, they started coming back, and they're investing billions of dollars. These houses, they're like half a million dollars right now. People will come back to the South End view, so we request more investments in the South End. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming forward, it seems like everything is
A lot. I sent, I sent
You said everything that we do.
I sent a document.
Yeah. Yeah, we received the document, I received it from, I was unaware of the meeting or the request to come to the South End.
We can, we can send another request.
Yeah, no, I know you can't, but it seems, for me, I like to address issues that we can address in a pertinent manner. So I know that you sent some document through, and I know that some of my council members were there to discuss it for you. I know there was like a stop sign that wasn't very red, it wore off a little bit, and there was signs on the floor.
That's one of the signs, yes.
Yeah, no, I seen it, yeah. So Mayor, did you have something you'd like to speak to on this?
Yeah, thank you so much. We, we appreciate you coming and, and the residents, only residents from the South End, also here present. So I got the PowerPoint presentation through Councilman Hamud, and we went through today, and I think we knocked out just about everything with the exception of the lead line replacement. Those are on schedule after they finish lead line replacement, they wait, they obviously fill it with sand and dirt, they have to wait for that to fall in, and then they come back out in May, and they complete with full grass restoration. And so that will happen sometime in May. The only request that we have is, you know, I've obviously met with Mr. Obed, I met with many of the residents of that neighborhood together. Many of the issues that are on the PowerPoint were brought forward that day. And so the only thing we request is, we have several neighborhood liaisons, Abir Hamud, Silvio Davis, Mary Landros. If you ever are able to contact one of them, we can try to adjust the issue almost immediately. I meet with Salah Ali on a quarterly basis, the issues in the presentation were never brought forward in that, in that meeting with Mr. Salah Ali. We had a neighborhood police officer and neighborhood liaison meeting, I think just a few days ago at Roman Village. Nobody attended, and then we had
No one showed up.
We also had a community town hall, and I know several council members were here at We had a community, there was a South End Town Hall at Salina School organized by William Ali and several other neighborhood associations, and it was packed. And we asked to open up to talk about all issues. And so some of the, so all, all I'm saying is that we hopefully try to provide the avenue. All we, this is phenomenal, like the PowerPoint, just saying
This was the thing, I'm sorry, it's messy.
Could have picked up No, no, this was honestly, to me, this was like the best thing. This is all we, if you give us something like this, we can address it as easy as, as apple pie, like it's, it's the easiest thing to do.
All right, well, you're telling me that I missed a meeting. Those are basic needs. Do I really need to come here to you, the streets need to be swept?
Yeah, the streets are swept, sir, but you know what?
They're not swept.
They are, so first what we're gonna do is, who, who is the liaison for, for down there, Rabhi? So if you can come forward, Rabhi, we'll have Rabhi, and then the project that you said that we should know how to do, the lead line, is that the one that you asked about?
No, they're not completed, I'm not saying you guys don't know how to do it.
No, you did say that.
They're not completed.
You specifically said that we should know how to do it.
How to do a project, a complete project.
Right, but we didn't do a complete project, that's what we said.
There was, there was miscommunication.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins, Director Hawkins, can we have you come forward? We're gonna, we're gonna get to the bottom of this, because I like to get things done, to me, I'm not about to show. I want to get it fixed, so you're saying that we didn't do our job on the lead line, so I want to get the process down, and then we're gonna get to Rabhi. Mr. Director Hawkins, the resident is indicating that the lead line replacement issue was done poorly and wasn't done in a proper plan. That's what you said, proper plan, so let's see, let's see what he, what our director has to say about that.
Well, they're, Tim Hawkins, DPW Director, they're actually done per plan. We have to remove the lead line, we test the water before, then we remove the lead line, then we have to leave it there and do a test again with multiple samples. When that test comes back with a zero lead content, then we do restoration. He's referring to the restoration hasn't been done yet, and the contractor will do the restoration when we get the samples back. And actually, I believe they were today, they came back clean and free of lead.
But can we do the restoration before the tests are about to
No, because if there's any residue of lead, we would re-dig it up and try to find where there's a connection or a joint or something that may continue.
Which would cost the taxpayers more money.
Correct.
So we
Is it my point is?
So that one makes sense for you?
Residents, residents were not told anything, because somebody come knocking on the door, we're doing a pipe, replace the pipe, that's it. There was no, no email, no email, no letters sent.
So that, no one said anything until they knocked on the door?
Yes.
Okay, so when they knocked on the door, they dug it that day?
Yeah, they dug it, they dug it that day.
We have somebody there, there's pamphlets that they hand out, they get water filters, we explain the process, and it goes all the way through, and they're given a water filter because that's what they're told to use until we get a clean sample.
And these are state, these are state mandates because of the situation
These are state mandates, and we do follow through.
With the water issues, yeah.
And they're all recorded with signatures as well.
Okay, Mr. Hamud Rabhi, can you, can you, I don't know if you've spoken with the gentleman, but he basically sent us a PowerPoint of many, many things, the mayor's indicated that, that that's been completed. Most are completed. But have you ever spoke with him, have you had any communication?
Rabhi Hamud, neighborhood liaison. The channels of communication in the South End, they all have my number. I'm on the group of the South End. These issues were never brought to me, and the gentleman that organized this walkthrough?
Yes.
I'm on his speed dial, never mentioned anything to me. And whenever they did mention it, it was forwarded to DPW, and they did take care of the issue. We, again, like the mayor stated, we held a meeting Wednesday, the seventeenth of April, last, last, last Wednesday. And we wanted to hear from everybody. We wanted, we were there to hear these issues. We're there to introduce the NPO. And you know how many people showed up? Nobody showed up.
The neighborhood police officer.
And, and the liaisons.
And the liaisons, which, by the way, I know you've been a resident for seventeen years, right? That's, that we never had a neighborhood police officer designated for areas and zones. Don't you wear that?
And Council President?
Hold on, I know, I know, let me just go through it.
No, no.
Okay, so that's new, right, that's under this mayor and this new council.
I'm not saying anything about that.
No, I know, but I want to let you know what's good, because, you know, you
I'm not, I'm not
No, I know, but
I'm not attacking anybody.
I know you're not attacking, but I want to make sure, right, you gave us a PowerPoint. You said that all this stuff is not being done, and you should, we should know, right? The city, under the new administration, has now has a liaison that is dedicated just to your area. That's number one, right?
So that should improve things.
Number two, well, I, if you ask me, I've been here for thirteen years, it's significantly improved. Right? There's millions of dollars that has been reinvested in, in our infrastructure, and specifically in, in the South End of Dearborn. But I wanted to make sure, because you haven't met Mr. Rabhi, so you haven't seen him.
I seen him once in the meeting, we talked about it last year.
He's our liaison, and then there's a neighborhood police officer that's specifically dedicated, there's four zones, and each area has a police officer for things like this. For example, somebody parks a junk car outside, right? We have that gentleman to go make sure it's being removed as opposed to using an officer who's trying to catch bad guys, right? So we're trying to be, you know, very prudent with our tax dollars, with your tax dollars, to make sure we do the right thing. So maybe, Rabhi, you should get on that list, and I know I was in that group at one point, so I know that, you know, I don't know why, how you haven't gotten contacted with him, but maybe we can find a way to get him on our list too, so we can make sure
Council President, the CRSD, the Association for the South End, I meet with them
Yeah, the neighborhood residents.
Neighborhood residents, I meet with them, I'm on their group chat. Any, any issues that arise, I get them all the time. And the reason behind the meeting that we did set up, residents were telling us, they don't know who their NPO is. They don't know who's liaison, and that's the whole idea. We want to introduce ourselves, our NPO, you don't have to call nine one one if you have park issues, for example. Call the officer.
Yeah.
I'll show up most likely as well. And same thing, those issues that were brought to the mayor.
I, I said to, because I don't know who to send to.
Yeah, well, again, that's why we're doing these formal meetings. We want to tell you what I do and what the NPOs do.
Thank you, thank you, Rabhi Hamud. And just so you know, sir, this is all new in the last three years, so this way you're aware of what we're doing different than in the past.
How long that started, when did that start?
They started the NPOs with a couple, two years, or less, ma'am?
But, no, the NPO is about, about a year, the liaison's been about a year and a half.
Yeah, we've also been expanding them, because there was also a liaison in, in the previous administration where there was just one. So we have designated area, so
Yes.
I find a way to, to, that group where
No, and, and again, again, I'm not saying it's perfect communication, but usually
And it's one of the ways.
Usually, the association we communicate with, we work with, again, a few residents that organized this walkthrough, I'm on their speed dial. Like, they have access to them.
Yeah.
And I wasn't even informed of it, which is kind of, you know, I should have been, so.
Right, no, that's fine. So just before we leave, I know we have some people like to make a couple of comments. Also, just so you know, we also have, Mayor, we also went to Salina School, a few of my colleagues were there with William Ali. Yeah, we're, we're the
In March.
I think our, it was in March, yes. So we had our, our recreation department there, and there was a full, yeah, Councilman Paris was there, Councilwoman Harris was there, I was there, and we had a full in the school, at Salina School, you know where that's at, I'm sure.
It's really a time of happiness.
But I know, but yeah, did you come to that meeting?
I did not know about that meeting. I did not know about that meeting.
So I, I, yeah, we gotta find a way to, we gotta get more connected.
That's, that's ninety percent of the South End needs. They didn't know about.
But I just wanna let you know what's happened over the years and what's happening now. It's a, it's a significant improvement of communication, trying to get a contact so that you can get things resolved quicker. So hopefully, you'll find those ways to contact. But I know we have a couple of councilmen, Councilman Hamud would like to speak?
Yeah, so first I want to tell you thank you for coming and thank you for creating the PowerPoint presentation that, you know, I, I sent to the president, the president, the mayor, council president and DPW and Jordan Torri because some of it are ECD items. So, you know, I, I know it's been an interesting tone here, but, you know, what you did was good work. I think, you know, the directors, the mayor, they, they actually want to know these things because sometimes, you know, it is a matter of getting the eye on, on these things. And, you know, kinda like what we were talking about earlier with Snow Woods and the work that they were doing. You know, it really is up to the residents sometimes to, to poke us on things, you know? I think it's always a good thing when, you know, I'm not saying go bless the mayor every day on Facebook, but, you know, there's like a medium, middle ground there. Send them a, send them a nice email every once in a while, like, hey, I don't like this branch in front of my house, no problem. So, but, but it's, so there is a, there is a certain pride that people need to hold their own neighborhood into account. And, you know, we, we don't always catch everything, right? You got staff running around on a regular basis. Yeah, I know, so, so it's, so I think my, my general point is, you guys did the right thing in this case, which was, yeah, go call your representatives, have them walk through, articulate exactly what it is you want done. And some of them are easier than others, you know, like, you're saying almost all of them, because I know for a fact that Cinco is gonna take more than a weekend. Right? Hey, hey, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying, I think you now know, but it's, that's gonna be a tough one. I know, I looked at that, I was like, that's gonna be a tough one. But, but it's fine, now they know, now they're gonna address it, inshallah, and, and we'll get it fixed. So, you know, let's keep, I think the important thing here is get, get your neighbors, get the residents into, into better lines of communication. If you guys wanna hold your own meetings to talk about these things, feel free. I mean, people talk to us all day long about all kinds of stuff. So, so feel free anytime and tell your neighbors, you know, we're, we're all here, we're, we're your representatives. And I think, the, the point that I think Council President was trying to make, to like bring you up.
I'd rather make my own point.
All right, fine, fine. The point I will make on behalf of myself, which is, you know, this new administration has been doing our best on, on the South End and a lot, and we're trying to do right by you guys in a, in a lot better of a way than, than we've seen in the past and as well to points other members have made, which is, you know, we haven't spending a lot of money down there. And I think one of the big questions I always ask is, you know, is this what, one of the first questions I asked when I went to that tour was, is this what you want? It's when we look at the Butterfly Garden, I was like, is this really what you want? Because I think sometimes, you know, it's important, you know, the, the stop signs do matter, the alleys do matter, the, the small stuff, it makes a difference. So feel free to bring those up. I think it's helpful for everybody to know exactly what it is that, that you guys feel is important to your neighborhood that, that we can help, sometimes help with in an easier way than you guys can yourself. So thank you very much for putting that together and thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming on.
Council President.
Yeah, I wanna try to get the council, because you could speak to them offline, because we passed our thirty minutes. I wanna try to wrap this up, so Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. One of my questions was gonna be about the Cinco on Riverside, so it sounds like that's already been discussed.
Engineering already had it on the radar, you saw the cone in there and so they're, they're assessing that now.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a cone in the picture, so that, and that was the city.
And it looked like the sign, the, the saw horse over had been knocked down, so it looked like the cone had been there a couple of days.
That was reported last year.
Okay.
That was there the past four years.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's being addressed now, so if it doesn't get addressed, come back to us. We'll first contact your community, your neighborhood liaison. And I can't say enough about this administration having added the neighborhood liaisons who attend all the neighborhood meetings. And sometimes, there are people who are more involved in their neighborhoods, your neighborhood and across the city. And some pay attention on social media, but they don't go to the neighborhood meetings. And so we get our information in different ways. And I know our liaisons are doing our, their best to reach out in all of those ways. So I commend them as well as the neighborhood police officers. So that's been a great addition that this administration has added for your neighborhood and for the neighborhoods across the city. But I did, I had a question about the Butterfly Garden, because it was mentioned earlier. This is right in the heart of the neighborhood and they're getting volunteers to help do the planting. And it's gonna be a, a long-term benefit to the environment there for butterflies and other environmental education for the neighborhood children, things like that. But just a question that had come up regarding the garden. What is the long-term maintenance plan for the Butterfly Garden? Who's gonna be out there making sure that it's taken care of and doesn't get overgrown after this effort has gone in?
Yeah, so the types of gardens that we plant typically need maintenance for like the first three years and our DPW crew is taking lead. And afterwards, they're largely self-sustaining.
Excellent.
Nothing is a hundred percent, you know, it's just like a gra, it was a grassy field. And so it's typical to a grassy field that needed to be mowed every few weeks, it's a little bit less maintenance than that.
Thank you.
And I think they coordinated with the name, I think they had you guys draw and I don't know if you were a part of that exercise about submitting the types of flowers and stuff that, that the residents wanted. But I know the, the bigger fix was addressing the dumpster issue there and putting up the six-foot vinyl fence.
All right, I just wanna conclude, we have a few more comments. Councilman El-Swafi.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, look, I really appreciate you coming here and being an involved resident. I did the walkthrough, I seen some of the items. It takes some courage to come here and, and speak your mind. And I also want to thank Rabia for all your hard work throughout the city and communicating. And I'm glad we got that line of communication going. And of course, the mayor, thank you. I know you just saw this, it just came on your radar and you took care of it right away. And that speaks true to your values, so I really appreciate you getting on this right away. Thank you.
That's all I had. Councilwoman Paris?
Yes, thank, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to address a couple of issues. I did go down to the South End and met with five or six people at one time because I wanted an idea of myself, not just the list that we got from email, but see it myself. Because, you know what? The people that live in the neighborhood that are complaining, you know the issue. You know what you've been dealing with. I don't, I don't live there, so that's why I made a point to going down there, contacting people and see if we could meet. I'm a little bit frustrated too, because I did talk to some residents. There's also a catch basin on Rulo north of Dix, you know, with a half of a telephone pole at the curb. And the A-frame was down. I put that back up because it had been collapsed and apparently driven over or whatever, just for safety issues. That was there for a period of time. You can tell just by the way it was sitting there. The one that we're talking about at Riverside and Canterbury, yes, the A-frame was down, the cone was down. I put those in there, put them back up. And talking to residents that lived there in that area came out and started talking, saying that it was been a year. But what the attention, to me, the problem is, how are these barricades going down? Nobody checking it and these signs and barricades have been there for a long time. So that is a concern of mine. So I will tell you, and I don't know, Mayor, if you're aware of it or not, I've had nine or ten things that I have submitted as a, through council request with photographs also. I did not know, you know, about the PowerPoint presentation. I would have loved to have known that because knowing that some of it was being addressed, that to me is addressing some of the communication problems that even a resident is saying. That they believe, whether factual or not, or whatever these circumstances were, that things needed to be addressed over a period of time. And the feeling that it wasn't addressed is kinda like the feeling of myself too, sometimes putting in a request to look at and still even those nine items that I've addressed, I haven't even gotten an acknowledgement that it was received. You know, so I under, it's a communication. You know, the residents are communicating and Rabi, thank you, and Sylvia, you're here, and Mary. Having these neighborhood liaisons is great. It's a great effort by the administration. I think we really appreciate what's going on. The neighborhood police officers too, and I know this has already been said, but you know what? Neighborhood policing is nothing new. You know, I go back to the time where we had a mini station down on the South End. And I worked the four B, I worked down there in that area for a period of time. So connecting with people, even though different cultures, different languages, different ethnicity, it's a challenge sometimes because not everybody speaks the same language or is willing to come forward and say anything, maybe just accepting it because I don't know what to do. So the big thing to me is the communication through our neighborhood liaisons, through the community leaders. I talked to William Ali for a great length of time, just recently too, about some of these issues. We need to come together and we need to somehow address the communication because it's being missed somewhere. You know, we're doing a great job on a lot of things and some things maybe we can do a little bit better on as a city. But, so we just really need to get together.
All right, thank you, Councilman, thank you, Councilman. Just to wrap this up, for myself, I, I just wanna make sure, as far as the PowerPoint, Councilman Hamud sent that, I thought you sent that to all council?
No, just to you and the mayor.
Yeah, I never seen it before either till you sent it. So we appreciate that. All I can tell you is, you know, if you look where, you know, like you said, for seventeen years, the first time I've seen you. So obviously it didn't bother you too long till now. You never came before to the city or complained before, right? So now we have, and, and Councilman Paris regarding neighborhood policing is not something new, I agree. But neighbor, a sign neighborhood districts is new. That's something a little bit different, because I used to have, you know, our, my, my areas, Sortini and a couple of police officers were park and walk, I'm sure during your time, that was the way it was. This is different. So we're trying to do this, we can, can we do better? Absolutely, we can always do better. So we appreciate you bringing it to attention and we're gonna do everything we can to, to fix it. But as far as inequities in the city, I don't see the city, the city's twenty-five miles, that's why I was staunch against districting or George or whatever you call it, where each, each street has their own representative. I don't believe in that. The city is twenty-four and a half miles, twenty-five miles. We have to represent the entire city. So I, I believe that we're doing the best we can. And you've seen the investments that's been happening in the neighborhoods that are getting through. If you haven't seen that, then I, I don't know what else we can do more than that, so we're doing the best we can. All right, thank you. Anyone else on this specific item, because we need, we have well over our thirty-minute time? All right, Mister Clerk, we are gonna close the public comment. And before we go to our consent agenda, I'd like to ask if there is anybody here from the Circus, Circa, how do you pronounce that? Circa Italia Entertainment LLC regarding an item? If there is, okay. I would like you to come forward first because that item is part of our consent agenda. Is that correct, Mister Clerk?
Ah, yes, it is.
Okay, so we would like to, before we go through our consent agenda and take our, our vote on that, I wanted to give you an opportunity. Thank you for coming. So you were notified by our legal department or by the city council department?
Economic Development Department.
Economic, okay. Can you state your name and your title?
Okay, my name is Angela Brown and I am the leasing manager and business development manager for Fairlane Town Center.
Fairlane Town Center, thank you.
Correct.
Okay. So you, you understand that you're here, that today we, we are voting regarding a, a request from your, your company or from Fairlane Town Center to do a special event that requires a permit and approval by the council? Okay, so is there anything you'd like, because right now there is a motion, Mister Clerk, am I correct, for a motion to deny that permit?
That is correct.
Okay. So would you like to speak on that issue?
Okay, from what I understand, did you get all the paperwork you needed and all the, the permit, everything was paid and, and all of that?
Mister Economic Development, our Director Torri can come up here.
Council President.
Mayor, you wanted to speak on this?
No, I just wanna tell you, procedurally, since it's on the consent agenda, to have a discussion on the item, you have to pull it off the consent agenda.
Okay, so let's pull that off, then.
I'll pull it off, I'll motion.
So we have a, thank you, thank you, Mister Romer. So Mister Clerk, we will pull what item number item?
Eight.
So pull item eight off the consent agenda, should I go, go forward and take?
You should do your consent agenda and then move to the next.
So ma'am, I apologize, procedurally, I, I had a note to make sure we didn't miss you. So let me just do this real quick, you stay right there and we'll go through it. So we have, Mister Clerk, we have a motion by Councilman Hamud and we had a support by Councilwoman Herrick.
You don't need, you don't need to.
I mean, or would.
All you need is one person.
One person, that's right. That's correct. So we only need Councilman Hamud to withdraw item eight.
No, to, to pull it off of the consent agenda.
Right, to remove it from the consent agenda, I apologize. That's what I meant, to move it to consent agenda. So now, before we move on to the vote of the consent agenda, is there any other items that any other member of the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Mister Clerk, can we have a roll call, a vote on this? Or do we need an offer and support on the current, the current consent agenda?
Yes, offer and support, resolution in need of offer and support, approving all the items on the consent agenda.
Offer by Councilman Hamud, supported by Councilman Abraham? All right, so now we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Swafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes. All right, so now, Mister Clerk, can we go to the next item, which?
The next item is item number eight, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris denying the request of Circa Entertainment Two LLC for a special use of land permit to conduct a water circus in the parking lot of Fairlane Town Center, eighteen thousand nine hundred Michigan Avenue from May thirteenth to May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Contention upon payment of fees, final approval permit, application materials and passing all applicable inspections and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. Okay. Mister Torri, did you have anything you'd like to share from the, your department on this issue?
Yes, sir, thank you, Council President. So we have, between the end of March and the first week of April, we see, received pieces of the application. Since that time, at that time, the fee was not paid, the review did not commence. We have now, I actually got a documentation yesterday from our permit counter that the fee has been paid. We've received that and we are on standby, prepared to execute a review if council were to approve the event, understanding what the motion is on the table today. And I can answer any questions about that process if you have any for me today.
Okay, so ma'am, do you understand what's going on here from the council's aspect? Because there's more to it than just that. There was also information, Mister Romer, regarding taxes. Is that correct?
Regarding taxes?
Yeah, it's, it, and, and if you look in the backup, there's delinquencies on real and personal property related to the, the site that this event is going to take place.
At Fairlane Town Center?
Yes. And we have a charter provision that.
There's taxes, back taxes?
Real and personal property on, to the owner of the site that the event is taking place. And there's a charter provision that does not allow the, the city council to grant such a request when you're default to the city. And taxes are included in that. So that's the rationale for the denial, at least that's my understanding for the rationale of the denial.
That is correct, Mister Romer. That is correct, Mr. Romer. That is, that is one, that is the main rationale.
So, it has nothing to do with the sixty days not being on time?
Sixty days is one part. I mean, you know, there's multiple parts. But as, as the city attorney has indicated, the major aspect is the council has a standing policy, which is also in our charter, which mandates us, that if you're not in good standing, which includes property taxes and personal taxes are not paid, you cannot be granted variances outside your normal scope. The mall is not designed for this. That's why it's called a special event, right?
Do you have, when, how long has that been delinquent?
Ma'am, that's not for the council, or that's something you'd have to check?
I wasn't aware of that, that, that's nothing that, that comes into my job description. So, I wasn't aware of that. My, my objective is just to try to bring entertainment and excitement to the center and, and, you know, bring it to the community. And so, you know, this has been something that's been well received for the last five years, four out of five years. Um, they have, we have submitted the paperwork. All of it's been approved. It's the same, same buildout as ten in the Sears, old Sears parking lot. So, you know, that has been approved in the past. So, you're saying that you're denying it because there's back taxes that are old?
That is, yes.
I'm saying by charter, they're required to deny it. And here's the delinquent sheets. If you look in the materials that were provided to the council and made public, which you can have my copy, there are delinquent, real property taxes at eighteen, at the site, eighteen nine hundred, as well as personal property taxes, delinquencies. So, the council cannot grant pursuant to charter the request for the temporary use on the, for your event.
So, has?
And that matter needs to be discussed with Fairlane. Your issue is with Fairlane. That, ours is completely separate.
So, that's going to affect what we do there, is what you're saying?
It affects what the council can approve when you request a temporary use of a parcel, when that parcel is delinquent on personal real property taxes.
I wish, I wish I was aware of that prior to the meeting. That way, I could have maybe tried to find some answers, I could get some solutions.
Well, I would take that up with the owner of the Fairlane Mall, because they're going to host an event with you, and you are required to seek temporary use of land with this council. You might want to discuss that with them before you come asking for the temporary use of the land.
Discuss with the owner?
With the owner of the Fairlane Mall.
That he, that he owns property?
Mr. Romer, do you have anything else? Because this is not like for the council at this point. I want to make sure. You know, I, I want to help her, but again, our job is not to go over, you know.
So, prior to approving any type of entertainment vehicle, you check and make sure all the taxes are paid first?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I guess in the past, when we've had it, the other four out of five years, the taxes were paid.
I mean, that would, that would be a, that would be an assumption, yeah.
Last year. We, we had the event last year, so it must be about, it's, it's about a year that the taxes are delinquent?
I can't.
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Brown, this is something you'd have to have outside meeting regarding and find out. I know you represent Fairlane Town Center.
Is there anything that can be done about it? So, the event could?
The charter, we cannot supersede the charter? Okay, and this is a privilege.
You can pay the taxes on their behalf.
I'm sorry?
You can pay the taxes.
And do, do you have a receipt or some type of, something you can give me that I can make sure?
If I can highlight anything, Council President, I can just highlight one point?
Yeah, if you can.
You know, the mere fact that Fairlane is not even here just demonstrates that they're a poor partner with the new ownership.
That who's not here?
Fairlane.
I'm Fairlane.
I mean, well, the ownership, right? The ownership, we, we have reached out to several times over the last several month period, highlights to us that they obviously care little for what they're currently doing with their facility. And so, for us, I think that's something that you should take back up the, the chain, to let them know that they're obviously have many a back taxes. And this continuation of wanting to host events outside as a supplemental revenue stream without actually maintaining the building and paying the taxes on time, it's unacceptable and it's not permissible.
Well, this is news to me. So, I was not aware of that. And typically, I don't get involved with their tax payments. But, you know, I'm just doing my job to try to have leading entertainment in the mall.
We do appreciate you coming.
At this point, those folks are so far along, and they send in all the paperwork, so that's all going to be sent back to them. And, you know, they were asked to pay. I mean, the, the Circa Italia folks, I mean, they, they were very far along in, in planning this. So, it's really going to be negative for them, too.
We understand. Councilman Abraham?
And I apologize, I wasn't here on Thursday night. I had some personal time out of town. I did read some of the backup. I just want clarity on when the application was submitted and was it complete when it was submitted?
So, we received it in the last week of March, and it was not completed at that time. The first week of April, I believe, we received all the additional materials to the application.
And, and what's the procedure for getting it on, I mean, was it on time then, or was it not on time?
So, it was not received within the sixty days. And so, we had that communication back and forth with Rosa and the team. Since that time, payment was received, and we moved to bring it here. And if council had decided to approve the event, we would commence the review.
And I just, again, I apologize, I wasn't here Thursday. Is there a reason why you can't submit the application timely?
At the time, typically, Circa Italia, for the last three out of four years, they've come in July or August. This year, they had a whole change of plans because they're going to Canada for the first time. So, they're spending the summer in Canada. So, when we had our conversation, they only had one day available, and that was the May sixteenth through the nineteenth. And so, you know, at this, at that time, we rushed it through like in a week and got it done. We knew we were like ten days short. But we were hoping that the fact that this was planned to have reviewed in the, you know, four out of the last five years, hopefully, it wouldn't be an issue. And of course, I wanted to talk to Jordan and make sure that, you know, we would work together and try to make it happen. But typically, we don't, I was.
All I can say is, for me, as in my seat here, I read the backup and get the agenda for the public meetings in advance. And I don't know how it wasn't communicated to you, but we need to maybe improve that. But it was clear to me that the taxes weren't paid. In fact, I was kind of surprised it even got on our agenda because I don't even think we can process an application for, for something of, the petitioner generally has to be, not generally, specifically has to be in good standing with the city to entertain privileges upon the young, their zone.
Right. Councilman, just on that point, it was myself and my capacity as the president to make sure they were notified, and we put it on because I didn't want to have an issue of them not having, you know, the last year, they brought it like really, the approval was within days of the show. So, and they had already begun selling tickets. So, I wanted to, for your, your point is, is well taken. I wanted to make sure this was abundantly clear, you were noticed, and that you had full opportunity to appear and state your case regarding it because I wanted to make sure that there was no, no one was inconvenienced any more than they needed to be done. So, at this time, as you heard from the city attorney, the current motion is to deny your request, and it was made by Councilwoman Herrick and Councilman Paris. Councilwoman Herrick?
Just a quick question. If we proceed with voting today and do the denial, would they, would Fairlane be able, and the applicant be able to come back to the May seventh meeting to seek approval at that time or support at that time?
It's for what they?
Depends, depends on the sixty days. Yeah, if they meet the sixty days?
They still wouldn't, because their event?
What I would, what I would tell you, Councilwoman, is that the, the event is for May sixteenth, and then to just give, you know, one week's time for plan review and so on and so forth is such a tight time window.
And that would be, of course, only if they paid their taxes.
And just so you know, in terms of the numbers, over a million dollars.
Okay, so, just to give clarification on where we stand.
So, this, this was occurred in a year because last year, we, we got the approval. So, within a year, they owe a million dollars in taxes.
I think the new ownership event last year.
I'd rather not answer that, ma'am. I mean, our, our job, ma'am, is what we've given you. The rest would be on your, to do, to do your diligence, okay?
So, in the future, I need to make sure that we are paid in full and that we're in good standing before I plan any activity for the mall. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's not any activity, ma'am. This is a special event. This is not what the mall is supposed to be doing, right?
Well, yeah, we do, we do special events. I mean, that's, that's my job.
I know, this is, ma'am, I, I lived here all my life. You've done, there's been four of them outside, out, out in this area. So, this is not normal. This is a special land use. Is that correct?
Correct.
We did the BMW last year. That was a big event for us.
Right.
It was very well received.
Okay. Did you have anything you had to add on this particular item?
You know, and in the future, before I come to these meetings, can I understand what, you know, why the denial? So, I will, at least I, maybe if I had some backup or if I had known in advance, maybe I could come with, you know, better prepare. You know, I, I just, I just saw it was denied when I came in, and I had no idea why.
I understand. I think the city attorney indicated what the issue was. So, I think you need to talk to your supervisors and, and go from there. And I think the mayor's made some comments. And this broadcast will be on, on our city TV, so you can, you can go ahead and show it to them and make your decision on what's best for you at that time, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on item number eight? Thank you, Mr. Tori.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing and seeing none. Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item seventeen, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of April ninth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, are there any additions, deletions, or modification to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item eighteen, ordinance on the table, ordinance number twenty-four dash eighteen ten, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at eighty-nine eighteen Whitlock Street from a VP vehicular parking district to an RB one family residential district zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This item is being brought forward to table the ordinance again due to the failure of the Dearborn Press and Guide to timely publish the ordinance as required statutorily and under our contract. The applicant is requesting a rezona portion eighteen, eighty-nine eighteen Whitlock, ninety feet from VP to business B one family residential zone classification. Planning Commission unanimously adopted this on their meeting on February fifth of this year as well. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Do we have any questions or comments on it? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number twenty-four eighteen ten, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at eighty-nine eighteen Whitlock Street from a VP district to an RB district zoning classification.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamud? Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Next item.
Item number nineteen, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two four dash eighteen eleven, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at one zero one four nine Michigan Avenue from a BB community business district to a BC general business district, five one five eight Porth Street from a VP vehicular parking district to a BC general business district, five one four five Eugene Street from a VP vehicular parking district to a BC general business district and VP vehicular parking district, also the properties located at five one two seven, five one two one, five one one five, and five one oh nine Eugene Street. And fifty-one twenty-six Porth Street from an RB one family residential district to a VP vehicular parking district zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Mr. Clerk, thank you for that. I appreciate it. A unanimous roll will be attached, take this from the table for its final reading. Again, this is another ordinance that was brought back again as a failure for the pressing, Dearborn Press and Guide to timely publish our ordinances. The proposed rezoning is being done in conjunction with alleviation to allow the Arab Community Center for Economic Social Services, better known as ACCESS, to conduct, to construct a treatment and recovery center on the Eugene Porth, Porath neighborhood. This was again, a project that was approved by our planning commission and has been requested by the council again. This is the second and final reading of the ordinance? Are there any questions or concern on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number two four dash one eight one one, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at one zero one four nine Michigan Avenue from a BB district to a BC district, five one five eight Porth Street from a VP district to a BC district, five one four five Eugene Street from a VP district to a BC district and a VP district, also the properties located at five one two seven, five one two one, five one one five, and five one zero nine Eugene Street, and five one two six Porth Street from an RB district to a VP zoning classification.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item number twenty, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two four dash eighteen twelve, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at one zero four one nine Ford Road from a split zone IC intensive industrial district and a business C general business district to a business C general business district zoning classification. Resolutions by, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Enos to take from the table for its final reading.
All right, unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. This request, the rezone one zero four one nine Ford Road parcel existing on the site is a legal non-conforming gas station. Since it's legal non-conforming use, this is a strict limitations on the nature and level of improvements that can be done on the property. Rezoning the property would, would resolve this issue by bringing the use to its conformity. The existing zoning is IC, which is intense industrial zoning, to, and BC general business district. And the proposed zoning would be BC general business district. The planning commission recommended approval on this request on March eleventh, and is also, is also being recommended by our zoning administrator, administrator as well. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number two four dash one eight one two, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two of the ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at one zero four one nine Ford Road from a split zoned IC district to a business C district and to a business C district zoning classification.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item twenty-one, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two four dash one eight one three, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at fifteen eight hundred Michigan Avenue from an OS business office district to a BA local business district zoning classification. Resolutions by Councilmen Enos and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, to take from, take from the table for its final reading. This is the request to rezone fifteen eight hundred Michigan Avenue. The request is to rezon the property from OS to BA in order to repurpose the existing vacant structure on the site. The rezoning of the property would permit a greater use, variety of uses to help repurpose and revitalize the existing vacant structures and serve the needs of the adjacent residential neighborhood. The planning commission recommended approval on the request on March eleventh meeting. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number two four dash eighteen thirteen, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at fifteen eight hundred Michigan Avenue from an OS district to a BA district zoning classification.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Elsawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-two, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two four dash eighteen fourteen, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, of ordinance zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at fifteen six hundred, fifteen six oh eight, fifteen six twenty, fifteen six thirty, fifteen seven hundred, fifteen seven oh six, fifteen seven twenty-six, fifteen eight twenty, fifteen eight thirty-two, and fifteen eight forty-six Michigan Avenue from an OS business office district to a BA local business district zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. This item is the supplement, the request of rezoning on fifteen eight hundred Michigan Avenue. The request is to rezon ten parcels between fifteen six hundred and fifteen eight forty-six Michigan Avenue. The city initiated this rezoning as recommended to encourage investment and reuse of existing buildings to be consistent with our master plan and to avoid characteristics of spot zoning. The existing zoning is OS, which is business office district, and the proposed, proposed rezoning is BA, which is local business district. The planning commission recommended approval at the meeting of March eleventh. This is the second and final reading. Mr. Clerk, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so the question we had on Thursday just had to do with, you know, we understand that it's kind of a proactive zoning approach with this one, but there were some questions we had about, are we, are we creating non-conformities by kind of doing this blanket rezoning? Because I did see in the OS district, for example, you get additional height, but what about things like parking and setbacks and?
Okay, we're going to have our, our planning division come up. I know that they sent an email regarding that there was no non-
Okay.
Yeah, you missed that?
Yeah, I didn't, couldn't find it.
Yeah, there was an email addressing your questions on Thursday, but we'll have, yeah, Ms. Bean can, yeah, our planning division direct. Let's have you address it.
Good evening, council. Kaylee Bianchini, planning and zoning manager. So, yeah, we did, we did send a response. Happy to talk about it, though. Yeah, absolutely. So, we definitely always look out when we're looking at a rezoning if there's any non-conformities that we created. So, in this particular case, no. Actually, what was happening is that we're going to bring the buildings further into compliance, and there's actually one non-conforming use. They'll become conforming once we actually do this rezoning as well.
Yeah, I think that was one of the other questions we had was, how did that even happen?
Ooh, yeah, no.
Well, yeah, we didn't want to go, I mean, yeah, it's, I think, very good question, but I think, I mean.
We don't really, I'll be honest, we don't really dig into some of it unless it really comes up as like a, a big red flag. And it's just because Dearborn's very old and it has a lot of stuff that's pre-existing our ordinance is.
And plus, this has to do with office. It's common sense. I mean, your employer's selling a lot of office. We're trying to change it from office. Is that correct?
So, in this particular case, yeah, we're going from strictly offices. The retail that's existing is going to become conforming.
And I, I know about that. I think my, my whole point about why I asked that question is just because, for example, we closed one of the loopholes that existed for allowing non-conformities in districts. Just, it was like a blanket loophole that you could just get whatever you want. So, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have more things like that where we encourage non-conformities. So, that was my point in, in looking into that question. So, but thank you, yeah. So, it looks like we're doing the right thing in this type of thing, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Mr. Clerk, can we have the second final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number two four dash eighteen fourteen, an ordinance to amend section nine point zero two, ordinance number zero six dash one 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 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at fifteen six hundred, fifteen six oh eight, fifteen six twenty, fifteen six thirty, fifteen seven hundred, fifteen seven oh six, fifteen seven twenty-six, fifteen eighteen twenty, fifteen eight thirty-two, and fifteen eight forty-six Michigan Avenue from an OS district to a BA district zoning classification.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Elsawafi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item number twenty-three, ordinance on the table, ordinance number two four dash eighteen fifteen, an ordinance to amend the nuisance chapter, chapter thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by adding Article Nine, Section thirteen dash five three one to thirteen dash five five eight entitled Bulk Storage and Handling, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. This item again is being brought forward from the failure of our Dearborn Press and Guide to timely publish the ordinance. The city currently does not specifically address the handling of bulk solid materials. These materials are a potential to contribute to significant debris that can create negative impacts on both the health of the residents and enjoyment of their property. The proposed ordinance aims to fill the gas by, by taking regulatory- The proposed ordinance aims to fill the gaps by, by taking regulatory approach similar to one that was taken by the city of Detroit and establishing standards by which new and existing facilities must follow. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance? Mr. Clerk, can we, is there any other questions or comments on this item? Can we have the second final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1815, an ordinance to amend the nuisance chapter, chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by adding Article 9, Section 13-531 to 13-558 entitled Bulk Storage and Handling.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll call vote?
Councilmember Inos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Elswafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 24, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 24-1816, an ordinance to amend the Parcs and Recreation Chapter, Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending section 1553 entitled Dog Park Use General. Resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Inos to take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll shall be attached to take from, table for its final reading, and this is another ordinance that was brought forward again due to the failure of the Dearborn President Guide to Timely Publish our ordinance. The amendment of this 15-53 is proposed to align the new expiration of dog licenses. This will streamline the process and eliminate multiple trips to the city. The change will move the expiration date from the dog licenses from February 28th to March 31st annual. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 24-1816, an ordinance to amend the Parcs and Recreations Chapter, Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending section 1553 entitled Dog Park Use General.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading? I'm sorry, that, the roll call vote.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Elswafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Inos?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 25, resolution by councilmember Hamud in need of support, awarding a contract to community housing network in the amount of $275,150 as a housing consultant for the East Downtown Dearborn Real Estate Development Project.
All right, the city's public housing buildings are in need of significant investment, and there is demand for additional housing capacity. The city is pursuing an innovative public-private partnership approach where we will invest in critical elements of predevelop, predevelopment to enable the redevelopment of the unutilized city property via private investment and ensure that the improvement of and preservation of our senior and, and housing, work housing units. After competitive bid process, economic development department is respectfully requesting the approval of a contract with community housing network to serve as a housing consulting for the redevelopment aspect. The funds are available from the project will come from our allocation of the federal home funding through Wayne County Consortium, as well as the general fund will not, the general fund will not be impacted by this project. The fund shall be charged to project C 08000. The request of the amount is $275,150. The city intends to complete this project within 12 months of the contract award. I know this was an offer, and our director's here in need of support.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Elswafi. I know we have some questions. I just, Director Tori, if you can come forward, I just want to thank the mayor for this. I know that some of my younger council people are really pushing for these types of things, which are good. You know, hope is a bad plan, and hoping that people are going to fill up into our housing is not a good plan. This here, I think, is proactive, something where our city and administration is going out and doing the legwork that most developers might not afford to do or might not want to do. And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Tori, this actually will make this much easier for developments to say, this is ready to go. Can you expand on that for us?
Absolutely, thank you, Council President, that's absolutely right. This type of predevelopment is critical for creating certainty, answering key questions, title work, survey work, navigating different opportunities. This is stuff that, when there's a community like ours that has specific goals, whether it's aesthetics, whether it's massing, density, all those different considerations that we care a lot about, even beyond what's in the ordinance, this type of predevelopment work helps us set the table and really set that framework for this is what we will accept and nothing less. And so, there's also going to be opportunities, obviously, to build in for your input as well.
Absolutely, Director, I appreciate it, and I think that's, that's a very good point, but it also, because in the past, what happens, people would indicators, might have the opinion that if developers don't like it, they'll go somewhere else, which they will. But what's more important, if we set a standard and they have already everything set for them, it makes it much more conducive, and more, more importantly, we'll get more bids and a better attractive project.
Yes.
So, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I think we had discussed this a little on Thursday, and I did bring it forward, but expressing a lot of reservation until I actually got the chance to read the RFP and, you know, the, the response from the bidder, and then me and Director Tori had a very good conversation about this, and I really appreciated, speaking of emails I did see, was, you know, how you, how you did propose to us how it fit kind of in the master plan along with some of the other studies we're going to be discussing today. And then even on, on aesthetics, you know, when you look at the portfolio that the, that the bidder did bring, you know, it's not all that impressive based on, you know, what we kind of see for Dearborn. However, you know, you're actually going to be working on that a little bit separately and things like that, so I actually really appreciated the conversation we had today, and it really put a lot of my doubts to bed on this one. So, I do agree with Council President that this is still a proactive item, kind of on the scale of the types of things that we're looking to do. So, I, I think, I, I just want to say, you know, compared to Thursday, I feel a lot better about this item for my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hamud. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Now, first off, I really appreciate seeing this forward thinking throughout the city. My experience with the county, I've seen the, the most successful communities are the communities that pave the way and demonstrate success to the potential developers. The developers want to reduce their risk, and we need to show them, we know our city, we know this is the best city to invest in, but if we can demonstrate that to investors and developers, we can have a clear path for them to success. I do have a question, when I see multifamily, are we talking about big apartment buildings or smaller multi-use, or do we, do you have any clarification on that?
So, that's a great question, Councilman, and I will just acknowledge too, we have the Director of Real Estate Development for CHN, CJ Felton is here, if, if we have any questions for him for his perspective, but part of this exercise will be determining exactly what we put on there. So, you could think about mid-rise apartments, you could look at townhomes, all those different configurations are on the table, but what this exercise will do is give us a series of options that will result in, you know, opportunity for choices, and then we'll have a site plan and a concept that we can roll forward. So, I would say, looking at multifamily, the initial instinct is, you know, you look at a mid-rise, it's a large parking lot, you have the massing, but ultimately, this process will bear that out.
Okay, exactly, so, once we go through this whole process, you'll have better answers.
That's right.
I get that. And as far as location, would that also be answered at the end of the conclusion of, of the study, or?
Yes, and now, th- this study in particular is looking at that, that Colson Street parking lot, so that, in that, in that sense, the location is sort of laid down, but in terms of exactly how that site is populated, yes, this exercise will work through that, yes.
And just for residents at home, this does not impact the general fund or the tax dollars, correct?
No.
This is coming from a different fund?
Correct, it's the federal home dollars.
Perfect, thank you, that's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. I will say that I know we discussed this a while back, you know, during a mayor's briefing, and I'm sure there were a lot of questions back then, because this is different thinking in what we want to see for the future of our community. What I would appreciate saying is Councilman Hamud bringing forward the request to have some of the materials for the rating and for the RFP and what have you. That was very informative to me, because as you can see, this item did not have a support. You know, it was an offer, but in need of a support. I will tell you, after reading that, I do understand that this is extremely specialized retail, or I'm sorry, real estate development. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of moving parts to make this happen, and I feel very comfortable about going forward with this, so I thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other questions or comments? We have the gentleman here from?
Yes, indeed, CJ Felton.
Yeah, let him have, like to come up, just to get a couple more clarifications on, sir, just your name and title for the.
Good evening, I'm CJ Felton, Director of Real Estate Development. With you in the audience.
All right, thank you so much for coming forward. Just for myself, I don't know if anybody else has some questions, but I appreciate you being here for us, and as all my colleagues have indicated, we're looking forward to this. The only question I have is regarding the, the rates. This says mixed force workforce rates? Is that something that is part of the study?
So, I can actually speak to that, Council President.
Oh, he doesn't?
He, he does, but just in terms of like the home funding that's part of this, so, so part of the analysis requires that we look at a mixed income development because of the source of the funding. So, what we're trying to do here is, is infuse market rate into the project, so you can create some stability and economic vitality, but that is a condition of the funding to, to have the conversation and to look through it in that way.
Okay.
And, and really, it's addressing the fact that we have, for example, the, the two existing workforce and senior housing buildings that are there, so it's acknowledging that those are part of the conversation.
Okay.
So, the goal is, is to have a development that has market rate housing, but you have two existing buildings that have workforce and senior rates in them and with the funding source that we have, so it's, it's taking a holistic look at that site.
Okay, is that your understanding on it? Because my concern, when I see, you know, not market rate, that, that, you know, puts a, I don't know if it's a red stop sign or emergency brake on for me.
I think there's enough property there to have a wide range, in fact, we envision, in talking with our technical engineer, doing some mixed use on the 50/50 lot.
Okay.
Would suggest that that's probably a good use, one of the good uses for that site.
Absolutely, and as the director indicated, one of the housing right now has a subsidized .
Our building.
Our stuff.
Correct.
Right, so it's, it's got to take it in its whole, in its.
Correct. Yeah, but what's really neat about this?
Yeah.
Your RFP suggested destination, or destinations, if I might put it that way, and what the next step is, is to create the roadmap, and how to get there. By working with you, mayor, city staff, housing commission, the business community, the residents, to see how people envision this site being developed. I'm not, we don't come with any preconceived ideas. We come to listen and, and then bring our expertise to bear on how we can give the community what the community is looking for.
Well, we do appreciate you being here and your expertise, and hopefully, this will put us on the right track and get some, get some people moving in.
Yeah, the other thing I would tell you?
Yeah.
What's contemplated in this contract is predevelopment work that we do all over the state all the time, and nobody ever pays for that. So, as a developer, be it us or somebody else that ends up developing this, that, that is a phenomenal head start for them to have all this work done. It will also shorten their timeline, which, you know, I don't have to tell, you guys know what happens right now, today on construction projects. They take twice as long as they did before COVID, and they cost twice as much, but that's going to shorten their time considerably.
Well, we do appreciate that, and again, we thank our director and our administration, the mayor, for this forward thinking on it, so we, we want the best for the city of Dearborn, and this is the way to get it, so we do appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Herrick?
Hi, thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
And I, one of the things that we often ask when we're hearing about a new development that might be taking place in Dearborn is, has a traffic study been done? And usually, the traffic studies actually come later. Is that the kind of thing that has worked into your planning when you're, when you're doing your research and your work?
In most cases, to get the site plan through, and I, you could probably outman this, Jordan, I imagine Dearborn, traffic study is probably going to be part of site plan approval.
Yeah.
And I, that's an easy thing for us to do in the predevelopment work.
Okay, thank you.
And that takes the burden off the developers.
Exactly.
Significant, yeah.
That's why I was asking.
No, absolutely.
Thank you, you nailed it.
No, no, I, it's, 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 this is, like you indicated, you haven't seen this around a lot of towns, right?
Uh, this is probably the first time ever that I can think of where we've presented, there's been presented this kind of an opportunity.
I say, when we're the first time doing anything, we, we must be right or we're really, really wrong. So, on this one, I think we're right.
I think you're really right.
I think we're right, thank you. Appreciate it. Director, thank you. Mayor, would you like, you have anything you need to add?
I don't know if that was a compliment or not.
That's a compliment.
It's a compliment.
That's a compliment, I mean, I, I think this is great.
It's an ocean of asphalt, and we're looking to see what we should do with it.
No, we do appreciate it, Mayor, it, it's great. I wanted to make sure was, the point was note to our residents that this has not been done in other cities. They leave that to developers, and then you're leaving your city in someone else's hands. to developers, and then you're leaving your city in someone else's hands. We always want to steer the ship the right way. Councilman Herrick, you have something to add?
Yeah, just one more thought, too.
Yeah.
And it's just that you've mentioned getting public input and giving the people what they need, and that's part of your process is identifying that. I really appreciate that because any opportunity to get public input on something that's going to be developed here, I know our residents appreciate it, and we do too, because we get the same information you do, knowing that we're going in the right direction for what the folks need, whether it's businesses or the residents here. So I think this is a great innovative approach, and I'm excited to see it go forward.
Well, you know, when you build something too, like it's being contemplated here, it's going to be around for decades. And you want it to serve the community, not only today, but to have some vision into the future, to make sure that that's, you know, going to continue to work for the city.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing and seeing none, your now scroll shall be attached. Next item. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 26, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, awarding a contract to MKSK Inc. in the amount not to exceed $415,000 for professional support for the pre-development of the Fairlane Mall and the establishment of a midtown Dearborn district.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. While Fairlane Mall remains profitable commercial hub in Dearborn, it has been sold twice in the last two years, with ownership failing to articulate any vision of sustainability or vibrancy of the mall property, as well as struggling to demonstrate consistent property maintenance, security, and reinvestment. The city believes the success of this area is critical to the overall health of the community and sees Fairlane as a foundation, as a midtown district that can provide additional local and regional draw for our community. This project will support pre-development activities, including site analysis, development, modeling, as well as cost estimating, legal and title work as well. The following, following a competitive bid process, the economic development department is requesting an approval of the contract with MKSK Incorporated for professional service pre-development activities at the Fairlane Mall to establish a midtown Dearborn district in the area surrounding the properties as well. The project intends to leverage available ARPA funds that was allocated toward economic development activities. The general fund will not be impacted by this project, and the requested amount is not to exceed $415,000. The professional service project will be charged to ARPA 70. The contract will be valid as a one-time purchase only. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is, from what I understand, is another example of forward thinking, trying to set the stage up for success for future developers, which we just demonstrated that we're in favor. So I'm not going to go down that path again. But this one is a little bit different. This is private property, correct? So can you talk about that a little bit?
Can I give the background?
Absolutely.
So, yes, councilman, this is private property. This is the Fairlane Mall center area. Obviously, growing up, everybody knew that the Fairlane Mall was the center of the city to some capacity. And for us, we believe that there's a broader vision for what we've termed, dubbed internally as midtown Dearborn. Most recently, you know, Fairlane can be described as kind of two circles. You have the inner circle, which is the Fairlane Mall compound, which is owned by several stakeholders, not just by one entity. Then you have the broader circle. We've been able to lure new employers to the broader circle. We also have new developments currently underway in the broader circle. And you have new housing coming about, about 110 units plus coming out in the broader circle. What's missing is really what to do with the ocean of parking lots that you have across. And so for us, we wanted to basically get ahead of this. We know that there's been exchange of ownership on the mall. And, but the, so some of the other buildings are still owned by some of the other, some other partners. And so from our perspective, we have been trying to deliver a vision for what should happen at Fairlane Mall. And this will give us basically the pre-development package to lay that foundation and to make those pitches, not only to the future operators of Fairlane Mall, the current operators of Fairlane Mall, but also to those who are buying up the properties in the outer ring, the future employers that are moving in, the future developments that are coming in, to basically, you know, sell the vision of what we expect to come over the next several years.
Understood. So this is helping future development of the private, private property, of how you envision it and what the best path forward, right?
Oftentimes, what I find myself doing is you have to pitch the city. And sometimes in order to pitch the city, you have to have something to show. And so in our original pitch decks on Fairlane Mall, we have very, you know, primitive renderings is what I call them. It'll basically have a map, we have like a zoning map of what we would like to see. This will take it a step further. This will do all the due diligence, all the pre-development work, so that when you're pitching to developers or future individuals who might want to buy the parcels, you've already done the heavy lifting and saying, here's what we want, here's what we will stamp approval for. You don't have to take a risk or a gamble on whether or not you think you have a partner in the city.
And the Fairlane Mall administration, are they involved in these conversations at all? It seems like they're not from the last item that we had.
They are aware of this. We've also engaged all the stakeholders, or the majority of the stakeholders in the outer ring, as well as the several partners across the Fairlane Mall compound. We have engaged with all of them, communicated with all of them, to ensure that they're a part of the process.
I appreciate and I support this effort, for sure. Thank you so much, Mayor and Director.
Yeah, Mayor. And then for our residents, too, I mean, the simple look at it, Mayor, is if we didn't do this, what's going to happen? And what we've seen elsewhere is people buy a property because it's, it's very low and have no idea what to do with it. And then what we ended up with is an entire area of a hot projects of no cohesiveness.
Correct.
And, and we do not want that. So I'm full.
Absolutely. To put it to a simpler point, we're tired of waiting for the vision to be constructed by who buys the parcel.
That's exactly right.
And for us, we want Dearborn, its residents, and us to be the ones driving the vision and find the developer who's willing to construct our vision. And that's what this does.
Absolutely, Mayor. And the alternative is something that I don't think anybody on the council would agree with. And so I, we fully support this. I appreciate that type of work that you're doing. It's showing, Director Torey. Thank you.
Yep. Just one question.
We have a couple other ones. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. What I do want to say is, I hearken back just a few years, back in July of 2019. I brought this up to the committee, the whole, only because I was at a meeting where central city was discussed, you know, with the administration at that. I was not on council, but I heard this. And trying to get a direction, what we wanted to do with that whole central downtown area or between the downtowns. So I really believe in this going forward because we need a direction. I mean, what happened after 2019? Things kind of fell apart everywhere, you know, because of COVID and what have you. And now we're trying to get back with some secure footing to have some sort of vision and articulation of what we need to do in the future. So looking at the backup material, and again, this is specialized, trying to get this information together. And I appreciate that background information coming forward to us that we can look at it more. You know, Ford Motor Company isn't everything. They can no longer do things like what they used to do. There was a lot of properties that have been bought up or sold by Ford Motor Company. We've got the motels along Mercury Drive. We've had a lot of development possibly coming, Lundie Parkway, all sorts of areas out there. But this specific area, if we do something with it, this could be a real gem. It could be a drawing point to get people here at our city. So I appreciate this.
Can I make, I'm going to make one final comment?
Yeah, Mayor.
I just came back from a fellowship last week, actually with, with Jordan and Kaylee over at Harvard University. And there was a mayor from California, and I won't specify the city to give him some level of privacy. But I brought up this project to him and talking about what we were doing. And he gave me the perfect example of how they replicated it and what he saw as a result. They had a piece of parcel where they did all the pre-development work, where his vision was an outdoor amphitheater. And so during his state of the city, he put up the renderings of what they believed would be the most beautiful amphitheater, and he pre-invited Live Nation and some of the others to be in the audience. They actually moved an amphitheater from another state, packed up their bags, and moved it to his city because they know that, that he wanted it. He did all the pre-development work for it. And they're currently having a temporary amphitheater being propped up this summer with conversations about how to make this permanent and a new third space for the whole community. And so that just gives some credence to what we're trying to do. We've seen it successful in some other cities. Obviously, that's a different type of example. But for this, that, if you make the pension, if you sell it, and if you're behind it, developers will follow.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Two comments, if I can.
Oh, Councilman Abraham, sorry.
So I, I appreciate the midtown, if you will, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. For me, we have two gigantic issues there. We have Fairlane Town Center that is obviously at a decline for many reasons, as well as change in ownership. And we have the Hyatt Regency. And I guess that's my question. How are those two partners going to move forward with a vision? Because to me, the outer circle will be a real challenge at success if you have these two behemoths that are just sitting there either dead or dying.
So I can speak to that. And that's a really good question. And I'll answer it a couple ways. First, the firm that we're looking at, we're near MKSK, and their partners, Perkins &amp; Will, these are the folks preeminent in the nation that do this work. And in fact, one of the things that excited us about MKSK and their stuff, Perkins &amp; Will, they literally did this in Chicago, in Ohio, Indiana. These were situations where they had private property, where they couldn't control the stakeholders, but they were able to build consensus around that A-plus vision and work through a lot of the, what I'll call the proclivities that are holding this stuff back. Like, the Hyatt, I mean, we could have a whole study session on what's holding them back in terms of ownership issues there. But with Fairlane itself, you've got legal encumbrances, utility easements, all kinds of crazy stuff that frankly, for any one stakeholder, it's too big to take on. But this kind of project allows us to position to actually work through each of those issues one by one, reducing risk, increasing certainty. So, you know, nothing's guaranteed. But I think what this does, as the mayor said, it puts us in the best position to lay out a path out of the morass. And so you have stakeholders around these two behemoths that want to see this happen. And so we can create onramps for them to engage, or at least frankly, in developer speak, is just burn them up to their property line. And so you can have a vision that works. Either they can get on board and work with it, or we can develop a vision that can work without them.
Yeah. I, to me, I appreciate all that. I think the biggest challenge is getting the people involved, the actual owners, the people behind those two properties to step up. I mean,
Yes.
In the last 15 years, how many owners have there been at those two properties? You can't even keep track of them.
I agree wholeheartedly. We haven't, we have reached out to them. And I think what has been done has not worked. Where we just wait around, a New York investment group comes in, buys up the parcel, never walking through the parcel, and then pitched us an idea that we know would never come to fruition. This at least says, here's what we know is the vision. And so if you're going to buy it, we already have this document up and live. And so you're probably not going to spend your money knowing the city's going to oppose your vision. I think that also will push away developers who have a vision that's opposing to what the city wants to do. And I think you might, yeah.
Well, thank you, because I think, I think that's got to be, that's got to be part of the primary goals, to get those two properties in a position to be successful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah. And we had a conversation about this, too, a little bit. My only comment was just for Mark or your department. I did request the RFP response. I don't think that was part of the attachment. I see the cost tabulation for MKSK, but I don't see the actual RFP response. I still want to see it, and I'm leaning toward approval regardless, because I think their portfolio kind of speaks for itself. So this is one of those where like, the contractor is pretty obvious in terms of the phenomenal work they've done. I mean, these guys build embassies for the federal government. I mean, this is real stuff. So I really appreciate the work, though, that you guys are doing, and generally like the goal of doing this. And I think that's something we've been waiting for, to see for a little while. I'm very excited about this, honestly. So thank you.
We'll get you a copy of that, for sure.
Just send it to all councils.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Director. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none, your now scroll shall be attached. Next item. Thank you, Director.
Item 27, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, awarding a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options to Abell Pest Control in the initial amount of $50,596 for Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West buildings. Pest Control Services are requesting immediate effect.
All right. Continue to provide safe and clean housing to our residents. The Housing Division has procured pest control services. The pest control services has been used in preventing the treatments of pests, including rodents, bedbugs, cockroaches, flying insects throughout the buildings. This includes a monthly service as, as well as as needed services. The public works and facility, in conjunction with our purchasing department, recommends a competitive award to pest control services to Abell Pest Control for $50,596. Term of the contract is for a two-year period with three one-year renewals at the same pricing and terms. It is, it is being requested for the council to approve with immediate effect.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, your now scroll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 28, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, awarding a contract to Maverick, excavating in the amount of $65,000 to demolish and depose abandoned trailers at Camp Dearborn and requesting immediate effect.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This, Councilwoman Herrick and Councilman Enos offered and supported, the director has asked for this to be pulled, this item, and be brought back when it's completed. Councilwoman Herrick, do you have any objection to withdraw your offer?
No objection.
Councilwoman Enos?
No objection.
Mr. Romer, is that correct?
Yep. It'll die on the table.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number 29, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, awarding a contract to Panchura LLC in the amount of $35,280 for the Ford Community Performing Arts Center netatorium bucket tree installation.
Netatorium? I just want to make sure. I call it the pool area. All right. The spring features at the Ford Community Performing Arts Center, the pool area, are approaching 25 years old, believe it or not. Going by quick. The current tumble bucket has been in grave repair, need and repair, and we are replacing with a new one. The city has chosen a new bucket assembly and making the decision is important that we reuse the infrastructure that is there. The Recreation and Parts Department in Conduction with Purchasing recommends the award of contract of installation of Addit Quicks Banana Bucket Tree, which is on your screen, to Panchura LLC, which has recently completed significant renovations on Morningside Park and done a very good job. The request is $35,280. The installation will take place during the Ford Community Performing Arts Maintenance Week in August. Any questions or comments on this item? All right. Hearing and seeing none, your now scroll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 30, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick, authorizing a contract purchase from Cascade Engineering in the amount of $224,167 for the purchase of trash cans and lids for city parks and requesting immediate effect.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Purchasing on behalf of Recreation Parts Department, Purchasing Department recommends a purchase of 4,000 trash cans that are 95-gallon capacity with lids with our, we have a shot of it there with our Clean Streets logo on them. The new trash cans will replace the old 55-gallon ones that did not have lids. This will reduce the opportunity for rodents and find food sources, to find food sources that will impact the overall vector control of issues with the city. In addition to the lids, the park trash cans will reduce the amount of litter that will be unmanaged through our parks and trash. The requested amount is $224,167. Lead time for the new trash cans is four weeks after the order is received, and immediate effect is being requested.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor.
Because like, this has been like a project of mine now for quite some time. And obviously, to try to tackle the rat population. I would never have thought how complicated it is to buy garbage cans and how expensive garbage cans are. In fact, the garbage can lids are more expensive than the garbage cans.
I know that. You didn't know that. I know that.
No, I didn't know that. And so it's interesting, you know, prior to examining, we have our GFL can, obviously. And we obviously, as you're aware, our DPW crew goes out every single morning and picks up the cans from all the parks across the entire city. And so we have a truck that picks up the 55-gallon cans right now. What we were examining before this, because was like $60 for a can and $120 for a lid. So it's $180 per can, which I thought was just absolutely asinine. And so I was like, I was walking through our downtown district, and I saw somebody just cut a hole on top of our regular residential trash can. And that was like 45 bucks. And I said, I'm not understanding. This one has wheels. The others didn't have wheels. And our garbage truck can pick this one up. I know that because they do it 30,000 times a week.
That's right.
And so we chose the lime green color. We have our Clean Streets logo on it. But hopefully now, for the first time, our city parks, we ordered 4,000 of these, will have lids on them. They're twice the size, and it's much easier to move for our DPW employees. So it sounds like it's such a small thing, but I have explored every garbage can possible on Amazon and the world wide web.
Well, Mayor, we do appreciate it.
Sometimes the best option is what you've been using for so long.
Well, we do appreciate it. And, and you know, it, the ones that were there were significantly, you know, past a useful life, and 55 gallons. We would see them always overflowing and stuff. So they had no lids on them. Some, most of them had wires, you know, that were very easy to get in and, and rode. And so this is something that's, I think is well, well spent and is going to make our city much cleaner. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind residents, especially with the warmer weather coming along, we're going to be outside more, in the parks more. And we can buy all the trash cans in the world, but if residents are not picking up the trash and putting it in the receptacles, it's going to be all over the floor. And as the mayor has demonstrated before, he will come to your house in the evening and give you your trash bag. So please make sure to pull the trash in the cans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask, I know I heard a few things about, will these trash cans, though, be very prohibitive for rats or other animals to get into them? Even with the lid and so on, you know, that lid has got to be down.
Yeah.
You know, if it's left up, somebody throws something in it and don't put the lid back, that doesn't prevent anything from coming back. But what about even gnawing through the garbage cans? Would this be the same kind of light material that we have in our receptacles for our parks?
It's the same exact contractor who makes our receptacles. We just chose a different color with a different design, and so they're fairly protective against vermin and rats and such. And I think for us, one of the things that we have, probably haven't finalized yet, I think we're going back and forth on, you can cut that small hole in the top so nobody ever lifts up the lid or closes it, and you kind of can throw it through. And then, or you can just leave the lid as is. So you have to pick up the lid and actually throw it through. And I think that's the conversation we're having. The other element I'll add, during the summer months, we're adding a new shift to garbage pickup. And so we'll also have an evening pickup across all of our parks for the first time in the city of Dearborn, and not just a morning pickup. So we're paying the shift premium to our employees, but we get them out at night at the major parks, then back in the morning at all the parks, at least across the summer months.
So with these 4,000 cans, they'll be coming 600 or whatever initially, these are just dedicated to our 40 parks?
Correct. Yep. And these are, they're lime green, that color that we selected. And so it stands out. And so nobody can take it, put it back at their house. It's very clearly a can for the park.
Because I know this has been a long time in coming. Even a lot of residents have asked for it. We need to take some other actions for more trash cans. And I'm going to tell you, you know, the local parks, you got 40 of them, you know, 40 parks, all the way from the small pocket parks up, that this is a while in coming. And I really appreciate this coming forward, because we look at our parks, you know, Mayor, you've got the Adopt a Park program, you know, a number of people have signed up for that. And I know residents can come back and say, well, hey, isn't that the city's responsibility? Yeah, you know what? It is. But as an example, myself, I don't live too far from a park. You take care of the area. You take care of your own property. You take care of the parks because you live there. This litter comes back. The city could very well come through a park, and with the next day or so, it needs to be picked up again. So I appreciate hearing that it's going to be picked up more often. But it's our responsibility, too. I mean, it's our neighborhood. It's our neighborhood parks. Even if it's a community park, you know, on each end of town, it's still our responsibility to help out. So if we can do something like that, it's going to be much appreciated, and it's part of our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mayor and Director, hopefully when you guys decide whether the hole or not hole, I mean, that's a tough one. For me, it's clear the hole should not be there, because the hole will never be big enough. And it's not just the rats, but the hole will never be big enough. But I'm going to leave that to the professionals. I just see, you would think the hole is big enough. What you're going to find out is they're going to block the hole with a pizza box or something, and it's better to lift it.
There's another fact that.
Or, I'm sorry, Director, or if there's some type of spring loaded that we can push the lid back down.
Tim Hawkins, DPW Director, I don't know if most residents know, there's actually a hook underneath the lid of every Dearborn garbage can, and that is made to hang a garbage bag off of
Yeah.
that weighs the lid down. So we're looking at, when we dump them, and there's high wind forecasted, that we could actually hang just a counterweight so that they didn't flip over, blow over, any of that, just in those high winds. Because if we're checking them twice a day, as the mayor said, one early and then one in the evening check, we could set a counterweight and not have them blow over, not have animals get in there in the evenings. So we're, we're looking into this as well.
All right. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Your now scroll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number 31, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize additional sales in the amount of $49,575 and appropriate budget in the amount of $21,300 in fiscal year 2024 for the Dearborn Ice Skating Center, 3060 and Center Banquet, 3058 divisions, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The 24 budget was prepared on November 22. And as, as the economy continues to return from the pandemic, both the DISC and Central Banquets divisions are experiencing a return to normal activities with growth in both the usage and events due to the increase in sales at each facility. As we requested, the City Council authorize the Finance Director to recognize additional sales and appropriate budget for fiscal year 2024, DISC 3060 account and Center Banquet 3058 divisions. The amended budget is $74,200 for DISC expenses with a revenue recognized of $130,000 and banquet expenses of $25,900 with banquet revenue, revenue is at $63,365. Immediate effect is being requested. This is a good thing as we see return back to normal and more revenues. We might pay out some, but we're collecting more revenues back, and so it's a good thing. Any questions or comments on this item?
Hearing and seeing none, your now scroll will be attached. Next item.
Item number 32, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris, setting Thursday, June 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Dearborn Administrative Center. 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Dearborn Administrative Center in the council chambers as the date, time, and place to hold a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and city tax rate, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Pursuant to City Charter 13.4, Section 2-516(c) and state law, the city of Dearborn is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rates prior to the final budget adoption. The public hearing is an important step in the budget adoption process for transparency purposes. The public hearing allows community to provide feedback and engage with elected officials regarding the budget as well as tax rates before the final adoption. The date for the public hearing is set for June 4, 2024, at 6:30 PM, and of course, here at the Dearborn Administrative Center, council chambers, and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 33, resolution by Council President Sereni, in need of support, authorizing to purchase the property located at 1521 Wyoming for the amount of $600,000 and up to an additional $2,500 for closing costs. Also authorizing the Finance Director to issue his proper warrant in the amount of $600,000 for the purchase price and up to an additional $2,500 for closing costs, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the city has the opportunity to purchase 5021 Wyoming. Acquisition of property would further the city's plans to purchase the gaps along Wyoming Frontage to create redevelopment activity in the area consistent with the master land use plan. The assessor has valued the property of $318,000 in evaluation. However, the property was listed for $875,000. Given significance of the 5021 Wyoming, the city's future plans for the Wyoming Frontage, it is recommended the City Council approve the purchase of the 5021 Wyoming Frontage for $600,000 and has requested the Corporation Council or his designees be authorized to execute the necessary documents to purchase the property. And the Finance Director be authorized to issue the funds in the amount of $600,000 to purchase the purchase price, plus up to additional $2,500 in closing costs. The funding for this purchase and subsequent costs shall be reallocated from Project ARPA 70 Economic Development and Project C1000 Land Acquisition for Resale in the General Capital Improvement Fund of 401, and a transfer of $300,000 from Project ARPA 85 Flood Mitigation and Green Initiatives to 401 Fund Project C1000 Land Acquisition. Immediate effect is being requested. Mayor, before we go forward on this, this is, Mr. Clark, this is with offer and need of support, correct?
Correct.
So Mayor, would you like, I know you weren't here...
Of course.
On Thursday?
Yep. So this is a part of the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What is it?
Yeah, I apologize.
Made a point of order.
Yeah, if you'd like to, you have to have a support first.
Correct. You have to support before you can engage in that discussion.
Support by Council, thank you, Councilman. Support by Councilman Elswafi. I wanted to give the mayor a chance, since you weren't here on the committee, to hold to speak towards this.
I appreciate it. So this is on Wyoming, it's the liquor store that's over in the Eugene-Porath area. For us, obviously, the city owns roughly 30 acres in this parcel. This corner lot actually unlocks access to that entire roadway, and we can finally shut down that roadway and such with future plans when we get down that path. But this parcel, plus 1.5 other parcels, unlock the first 20 acres and make them wholly finally owned by the city of Dearborn. Secondly, I also offered that, prior to us coming in at $600,000, there was an offer at the table for $680,000 by another buyer, but we decided to forego the liquor license and some other dealings so that we can get the parcel at a lower price than the other buyer in order for us to come in and get this parcel. It's a very strategic parcel. We've acquired basically all the parcels in this area, and if you truly care for the South End and you want to deindustrialize the neighborhood, this is the best pathway to do it. We have to absorb this land to come up with a vision for these parcels, to stop trucking from coming into this area so that we can actually add green space, tree canopy coverage, and things that can actually improve public health along this corridor leading into the South End. And so for us, this is a very strategic parcel to acquire. And again, this parcel, plus about, I think, one other house, unlocks the first 20 acres in totality for the city of Dearborn to then finally move forward with the project. And this is something the city of Dearborn has been acquiring now for 50 years.
Yes. I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. That's what I wanted to bring up, and thank you, Mr. Romer, regarding it. I know that myself and some of my colleagues have been here longer. This has been an ongoing vision for the city for years, acquiring these properties to have a redevelopment site. I wanted to make sure that that was set, so I do appreciate that as far as how long this has been going on. We have some comments or questions? Councilman Hamud?
I think based on questions we heard at the committee, the hole, for example, I mean, the seller actually approached us on this, so we couldn't even hide our interest in this situation. The assessor has already assessed it at only $300,000. I feel we're significantly overpaying for this property because of the non-market interest expressed. And my problem is, when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars, regardless of where they came from, you know, we want to talk about benefiting the South End. I think, you know, they left, they're not here. You know, they were here earlier about the things that they actually cared about. So my problem is, when we're overspending by $300,000, then that's not including the fact that we're going to demolish this building anyway to what's going to end up being, you know, an important use, which has to do with flood mitigation. I completely understand that. And we already own all the land all around it. I have a hard time believing that this one parcel for almost a million dollars, when this is all said and done, is going to be the key to the whole entire area of figuring out the use. And if that's going to be, you know, the gun to our head to do this, that's just not how I believe in doing business on this one. I don't think that anyone should ever hold the city hostage over this type of thing or get rich off of non-market interest that we've expressed in it. So you know, the fact that they approached us with a sale and regardless of what the other options were, I don't think that we're going to be looking at any other uses for this property anyway. I mean, we saw the other reason why the previous sale fell through, and...
So it kind of is what it is.
Yeah, so a few points. Obviously, there's no gun to anybody's head, and I just disagree with the million-dollar marker number. But what I would add is, the number one complaint from the residents of the South End, aside from the micro issues brought forward, is actually the trackout complaints. And we already, with council support, acquired parcels on Industrial Street, and I would tell you, I'd had over a dozen entities who have called us saying, we tried buying those parcels to get new trucking lots approved. In fact, when this administration came in and CBRE was our former Realtor contractor, they were prepared to sell Eugene-Porath to a trucking company across the street, and we halted that sale and prevented this from actually happening. So I wholeheartedly disagree that this parcel is not of significant importance to the South End. I think this is how you begin to deindustrialize in the heart of industrialized America, bring in green space, bring in canopy coverage, improve public health. This is the type of transformational product that gets it going. Yes, you are paying above market price, but that's just the reality of the market that we're in, where this parcel is located, what people anticipate. If you just go to Google, look up the Wyoming lot and place that little Google pin in the middle of the road, look on one side of the street and look on the other. On one side of the street, it's shipping containers all the way high with trucking companies and trucking lots, and on this side is the only green oasis in a desert of trucking lots. And so for us, a very strategic acquisition. I understand why you would not want to pay what it's currently at, but I would tell you, from a parcel that was placed at $900,000 with liquor license, plus all the products, we said we don't want any of that, and we're able to beat them down on price, down to 600. And in fact, they prefer to come to us knowing we're the city and bypass another buyer who offered over $80,000 more.
And with all the respect to some of that, I understand what you're saying, and I understand that it's, you know, part of this greening that is being targeted, but the actual area of the lot in comparison to the land that we currently own is so small, you're not going to, I know better than that. You're not going to be able to put an industrial facility on this one lot. It's just not possible.
But from a strategic acquisition perspective, though...
And it's not for that.
The lot is on the corner where you also have a street entrance. Without acquiring this parcel, you can never actually vacate that entire road as well. And so because this business will always be on that corner, and you always have to maintain that infrastructure for that business. So from a strategic, even from a zoning perspective, from a land acquisition perspective, grabbing this parcel also gets you to be able to vacate that entire roadway.
No, we already have all the rest of the properties in that area. There are already street access around it on the other side. I think there's plenty of ways we could utilize the land around it in a very, like, excellent manner to accomplish...
We've got our vision, that's all.
Okay. I mean, no, I agree on the vision. I just think we can accomplish 98% of what needs to be done in that area without necessarily having every single parcel in the area. It would be ideal to have all of those parcels, but you know what? You're always going to have holdouts, and sometimes we have to go figure out how to make progress without them. So I think it's about getting creative. I think the land use there is already, it's not even zoned for industrial, they'd have to come before us. You have the MLUP open, so we can discuss all of the vision on, you know, we have the flooding study open, we have the MLUP open. We can discuss the vision for the area as part of the MLUP process to get it zoned appropriately, and we can figure out, you know, what the effectiveness is of that vision that you do have that I completely agree with, also as part of the, you know, outcome of the sewer study. I just don't think that we need to be paying double the price and then additional money on top of it to do the demolition. And you know, it might not be 100,000, 1 million, it'll be about 750 minimum by the time we're done. So that's my point. And for that money, that premium that we're paying for this guy, to be able, or woman, I don't know who owns it, to be able to accomplish the vision that I know is important, I think we can do other things in the city with that money that we could possibly even increase property values for people, or actually help people with the smaller problems they're dealing with, and then maybe push this a little bit later or come up with more creative solutions. That's my point as a council member.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I think Councilman Hamud just triggered something that I wasn't really thinking about, but it adds credence to the comment that I want to make in that Councilman Hamud was talking about possibly industrial. You know, we go back in time, that whole area was land banked, or we were trying to land bank for the thought of intermodal freight, you know, with the possibility that we would have another bridge coming from Canada to Detroit. And that whole access along with Detroit, so people understand that, that was going to be an intermodal freight terminal along with what Detroit was developing, and that was the thought. And I'm going to tell you, I do commend what we have done by buying up some of this property and changing that thought process that we don't want that. And to the point that the mayor was making, you're right. We don't want trucking companies there, we want to have something else. But this is what's making me give a little bit of pause here, is within the last year and a half, we have bought a couple other parcels that are very, very similar in cost to this property that we're just buying. So me, something that is going to be very important to me, we had a vision in this city at one time, intermodal freight and having trucking and whatever in that area. But we care about what's going on on the South End, so in order to do so, I need to be assured too, as a council member, what are we doing in the future? How do we articulate again our vision? That's coming up again. What are we going to do with that property? So for me to really even start considering any more purchases, I'm going to give a little bit of pause because I'm asking for the administration to share some vision with your council members to understand what we are looking at in the future for that property. It's the first time I'm hearing that may be industrial, or it might just be the councilman's opinion, but I just want to make sure that we are communicated with what our vision might be for the future.
I think to clarify, neither myself nor the council are advocating for industrial. I think we're all advocating against industrial. I think for us, what we set along, including with the parcels that were acquired on Industrial Street, I think that's maybe where the confusion was, is basically creating a green belt within the area that has the least tree canopy coverage and the least green space in the entirety of the city. The last thing I'd also add is that there's liquor stores around the block from the new $25 million Substance Use Center that's being propped up. And so for us, if you really want to change the landscape and the vision of this entire area, you know, unfortunately, the timeline of our master land use plan, the timeline of our housing study, the timeline of all these studies we're conducting, don't coincide with when this owner of this property decides to sell their parcel. And so we are marching forward with the visions that we have of constructing these green belts. At the same time, this parcel came up for sale now. And so I can't go back to this individual and say, hey, hold on to it for two or three more years, let me finalize my plan, finalize what I'm doing everywhere else, and then I'll come back to this parcel. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way.
And I understand that, Mayor.
Correct.
And I'm willing to go forward with this.
Of course. I'm just trying to give you the general sentiment.
Mayor.
One other thing I'll share with you, the whole reason we were in Cambridge, myself, Jordan, and Kaylee, we actually had the design experts from around the country looking at this specific parcel itself. And so we had them examining it. The design experts across the country are all in agreement, this is a very unique parcel in an industrialized area, and think that phenomenal things can be done once you strategically acquire all the parcels. And so, you know, from the best design experts across the country looking at it, to us understanding this improves public health, we think it's the right choice forward.
Mayor, just on behalf of my counsel and Councilman Paris's request, where you weren't here Thursday, I think the bigger, broader picture is that the council is looking for more aspects. In fact, Councilman Paris would ask if we could have a closed meeting, which I think Mr. Mendel's indicating we could not, but you could have individual meetings. I know you have articulated what the long-term plan is, and I understand that, as Jeremy, Mr. Romer had indicated, this is 50 years in the works. So I think the council is just looking for some more direction on which we're going as opposed to piecemealing it, even though we know it's not piecemeal to us, to yourself, it's a broader vision, which I understand, and most of us do. I think the council is just looking for some more direction on the way we're going. But I understand. And also, for the record too, there was some sales in the area that support this aspect. So I want to make sure that's clear to the resident, there was some sales on, is that correct, Councilman? Two more sales?
Within the last year and a half.
And what were the prices for them?
Right around the same.
Right around the same, so, right around 600,000. So my point is, I see it a little bit differently, and I do appreciate the fact, you know, being a business owner, a small business owner in the past and currently as well, I do understand your vision as far as making this agreement and allowing them to sell that liquor license independently, because it didn't go in the garbage.
Correct.
They were not selling as well. So it's a strategic way to propose it. So that's why I felt strongly enough to actually offer this for the support. But I know Councilman Enos has something to add.
Can we get a map of all the property we own in that area in Wyoming?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We usually get that every year or so, but it's been a little bit, so. Jacob, do you have that? That's all, Councilman? Councilman Abraham?
Yeah. I apologize again for not being here Thursday to discuss this in detail, but I just noticed today that there is the broker's purchase agreement in the backup that indicates they're representing the city on this purchase as a dual agent. Is that fact true? That Caldwell is representing the city? Because it says we're paying them a fee, 5%. Or at least it's coming from the proceeds of the sale, and they're a dual agent. And I apologize, I turned the page. It's item 21 on page nine?
The seller's paying 5%?
The purchaser and the seller each acknowledge that, number one, the purchaser's real estate agent is Caldwell Banker. I mean, I don't think it could be any clearer than that. And that they're getting paid 5% of the proceeds.
Seller agrees. We're not the seller.
Say that again?
It says seller agrees. I'm not seeing we're paying the fee.
Well, I'm not, before you even get to the fee, the agreement states that they're representing representing the purchaser. The purchaser's real estate agent is Caldwell Banker. Uh, are you not seeing that on line one?
And is acting as a-
I, I think that's just a, an error-
Okay.
-in the, in the, the purchase. It should be seller's.
Well, Mr. Romer, if I may, uh, because I have some experience in, in real estate, and I know you do too, Councilman Abraham, but I, I think the situation here is that it's, I think this is trying to define, especially with the new, uh, law changes, that there is not a, another, a buyer's agent as we represent ourselves as the city. Is that correct, Mr. Romer, that you represent as a-
Yeah, we represent, the legal department represented the city.
Right. I, well, I think what it's indicating is that the, there is not a separate agent, because usually there's a buyer agent and a seller agent. Uh, since there is no other agent, I think this is really a, a form type, a situation where it's indicating that there is no other agent on the other side, as opposed to, and that means real estate agent. We are our own entity representing, you're representing us as the city.
That's right.
That's my understanding, that's how I, I interpret this.
I, I just haven't, I haven't, maybe I missed it, but I haven't, I don't recall seeing us using a boilerplate purchase agreement in the past.
We, we have a boilerplate purchase agreement, but this was their purchase agreement that they provided us that we revised. So all of the terms that we negotiated, we, we revised their agreement. That's how this transaction worked.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to change? You got time? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any objection, unanimous roll?
Yeah, roll call, roll.
Okay, Mr. Clark, can we have a roll call, roll?
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
No.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Al Sowafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Sereni?
Yes.
Six yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Next item.
Uh, nothing further on the adjunct clerk's office.
All right, great, so, um, before I open up to my colleagues, just one small, less shoot. Okay, don't worry. Uh, open up to my colleagues, our next budget hearing is scheduled for this Saturday, the twenty-seventh. That's correct, folks, Saturday. Uh, something we're trying out new here, uh, twisted my arm on it, but we, uh, we did do it here. It's going to be here in our council chambers from nine AM to four-thirty. There is going to be some refreshments provided by the mayor.
Is it our office or your office?
It's right here.
So it's in the council chambers?
Council chamber.
Your office pays for the-
We'll pay for it. I wanted to make sure that, uh, that our residents understand, uh, the council's primary function, I've said many, many times, is, uh, budgeting and making sure that your tax dollars are widely used and wisely used and appropriated. Um, this Saturday was entertained to bring in more staff, to look at smaller departments that usually do not get looked at at every single, uh, council budget hearing. A lot of times, uh, they're not even reviewed because they're in a total overall budget. Um, so we are looking to, again, have another balanced budget this year. I just want to remind the residents that this Saturday, there'll be several small, uh, departments that will be, uh, coming forward, that we wanted to bring in one clump. And of course, our main, um, budgetary use is in our safety, public safety, our police department, fire department, that is, are on separate days, and we will be, uh, looking at them very closely, as we do every year. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, Mayor, uh, you bringing forward, uh, as in the past, an actually budgeted, a balanced budget, and of course, our director, uh, Kennedy and his staff, uh, for what they do. This budget hearings are a, a long process. We have, I don't, Mayor, last time you said there was thousand requests, council requests, or was you, I know there was a log on them.
There was a lot.
There, yeah, well over thousands of requests, uh, for information, to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing, uh, our job, and it's, it's, it's serious. You know, it is, you know, our taxes have come down. I've said it a few times publicly, that our tax rates are lower than our neighboring Dearborn Heights. It's not by mistake, folks, it's, it's good work, synergies, uh, finding ways to, to, uh, make sure that we get the most, uh, out of our, uh, our tax dollars for our residents. And, uh, we hope to see you there. If you'd like to come, uh, to the council chambers for that, it's going to be, uh, a pretty, and, and new experience as far as not the process, but the day and the time. Um, I'd like to open up to our, my colleagues, Councilman, uh, Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to go ahead and follow up on what the council president said. I believe that there are seven departments that are being represented with their budgets being presented that day. I would only ask that we try to receive the material ahead of time, to be, it's, it's a burden on finance, it's a burden on the city to do that, but it's also a burden, I'm speaking for me, it's a burden for me. I read this material, I read this backup. Uh, if I don't see it, it would present, uh, some difficulty for me articulating my thoughts and concerns and what I am willing to support with the budget for these individual departments. So if we can have that available, but even before our people's-
Finance.
Finance director-
Mr. Director.
-speaks, but before he does, just another thought of that too, just for residents that are here, and residents at home, you can easily go on the City of Dearborn website. There is a tab that says, uh, about fiscal year twenty-five budget. Click onto that, it will give you all the information. The backup material that I'm speaking of, uh, it's on, it will be on there, made available for all the budget meetings that are forthcoming, and one that we already had earlier in April. So please, if you're interested in it, at least take a look at the backup material, because then you get an idea what the budget is all about and why we're doing some of the things that we're recommending to do or not. So, and our finance directors here, thank you.
My Kennedy Finance Director, thank you, Councilman Paris, for the question. It is set to go out to your council mailboxes tomorrow in electronic form, so you will have it ahead of time.
Yeah. Yep, thank you, Director, uh, Director Kenny, and then we are having, I know we had IT, and all of us are having tablets trying to save-
It's only a hundred and eighty pages.
That's not bad.
That's not bad.
Not better.
It's better than a hundred.
That's definitely better. We do appreciate it. And then just, of course, as Councilman indicated, uh, these budget hearings are, uh, are preliminary. We always will, can entertain to extend time, bring back more information, um, so this is the, what is the council's job, so we will, we will get through the work. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, hearing some, any, uh, anything from the administration and Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I, I, I guess I saw it on the, I didn't, I wasn't here Thursday, obviously, Chief of Staff was, so I saw, it was on the consent agenda, um, but we held a public meeting yesterday. I see, you know, one member that was here at the meeting yesterday, um, who moved from Dearborn Heights to Dearborn, so we have a lot of people moving back to the city, which is great. Um, we, as a city, we obviously executed this, uh, third-party study of understanding of our stormwater infrastructure system, and we got the preliminary results. We'll be sharing the final report in town hall fashion across the city this summer, working with our public works team, our community relations team, as well as our vendor on this project. Um, but we have, with the council's support, at least submitted for preliminary funding to the state of Michigan. Um, we're going to be seeking over three hundred fifty million dollars. Um, our first request for the first three hundred million has been sent into the state of Michigan, um, just trying to pursue available dollars. What we did not want to happen, knowing that the funding cycle, you have to have your application end by the springtime, we didn't want to know that the report finalized in the summer, wait one whole year before we submit for funding all over again. The good news is, the governor actually announced this yesterday, which I'm so happy we submitted now, just yesterday, they announced an additional three hundred million dollars in available funding, um, uh, in the resource that we went after.
That's great.
So, uh, and, uh, this morning, this early afternoon, you know, Bob caught me being late, but I was presenting to the committee, to the committee itself, um, in Lansing via Zoom, uh, on the update of, uh, City of Dearborn, where we are in our study, and the feedback that we got is, we're well ahead of other municipalities trying to understand the flooding situation, knowing that we have preliminary data, we have a solid understanding for the pathway forward, and at least a grasp for what this is going to cost us for the next ten to fifteen years.
Absolutely, Mayor, I do appreciate it, and you know, there's, you know, I was, you know, uh, clearly out on this years ago regarding the flooding and then what was going on, so, uh, I do appreciate it, and I do appreciate, I appointed Councilman Hamud to sit on that, uh, committee and to get a real robust, and, and Mayor, for your leadership, because I know we've talked a couple times, and you said, "We're doing it." We're going to start it all, then we're going to find the money. But, you know, uh, for our residents to understand, this is, um, a multifaceted issue. You got to remember, there was caissons that failed, uh, litigation that resolved, there was tunnels that were built way before I was born, moving water, uh, goes back to ancient times, but, uh, it's not as complimented, complicated, excuse me, as some people want to make it to seem it is, but it also is very costly, and we do, are limited in what constraints we have. But we do have to find a way to make sure what happened in the past doesn't reoccur. Uh, we have, some of my old council members used to say, "Hope is a bad plant." We're not just going to hope that it doesn't rain, uh, too long and too hard. The climate is changing, if you haven't seen that, uh, there's something missing out there. So I, I do appreciate, uh, Mayor, the, the vision you have, and, and, and the quality from OHM, the people that came and gave us the presentation, and, you know, this is, shows to our residents that we take this seriously. You know, it's, it wasn't just, you know, flooding and they cleaned up their basement, there's memories and many things that were lost in those floodings, they were very serious. And, and I was on the council and called for an investigation years before, and, and I, I firmly believed in it, and I was glad that we finally did get one and, um, and actually executing for it. But, uh, again, Mayor, thanks for your vision about trying to find the dollars, because we can come up with all kinds of things here, but if you can't fund it, you know, that, that's a problem. Um, and funding is, is always a key to it, so I, I know that, I don't want to take anything from your probably subpress release, but I know we are way, way, way over a hundred million dollars under your administration, this thirty-fourth council, on grant funding. That's some serious dollars. To give people perspective, the budget is approximately a hundred and eighty million dollars in general, a hundred and fifty million in general funding. So to get a hundred million dollars in from our tax dollars, which I'm a firm believer, it's our money anyways, going to the federal government, getting it back to our Dearborn residents, all that does is allow us to do transformative projects and take the burden off our residents and to keep our city going as, as a city that it should be. So I do appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, obviously, you'll be, we'll be presenting the budgets, talking about more